I'd like to call the December meeting of the Planning Commission Order. I'll call on Commissioner Rector for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather to make decisions for the general welfare of this great city we call home. Guide us as we thoughtfully consider the items before us. We ask your blessings on our first responders and for those serving our country who will not be home for the holidays. Please help us to remember those less fortunate than ourselves. We also ask that you bless those whose lives are closely linked with ours. We also ask that you bless those that we love but see no longer. And Lord, thank you for providing me with the opportunity to get to know and work with the fine folks that I have served with on this commission. Please continue to guide them as you always have. And in a personal petition, I ask that you look after the family of a friend and coworker who, as I speak these words, are committing a family member to the grave and her soul to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Wyman, your call to roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Hicks? Commissioner Staler?
Here.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Here.
And Chairman Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wyman. Are there any corrections to the minutes for the month of November? Here and now, they were standing as presented. We have one item on our agenda today that is not a public hearing. It's a family transfer. Family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2021-00006. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2021-00006, submitted by Martin Speroni Saunders and Ojeda, PC applicant, on behalf of Harry L. Castle Jr. and Karen H. Castle, property owners requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve family transfer subdivision plat to create two new parcels on property located at 1842 Hosea Road, zoning map 45, parcel 31. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located at 1842 Hosea Road, zoning map 45, parcel 31, FTR 2021-00006. Staff Planner Grace Brazil will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to subdivide two new family transfer parcels for Charlotte K. Castle and Matthew J. Castle and his wife Samantha R. Castle pursuant to Section 31-514 of the UDO. The subject property is located in the Rural Agricultural Use District and is designated or as designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Harry and Karen Castle own the subject parcel depicted above, which is located on Hosea Road and is currently comprised of 31.94 acres. Mr. and Mrs. Castle proposed to subdivide approximately a 10-acre parcel to their daughter, Charlotte Castle, and a 12.2-acre parcel to their son, Matthew Castle, and his wife, Samantha Castle, while Mr. and Mrs. Castle would retain 9.6 acres as the residue parcel. The surrounding area is Zoned A Agricultural, which consists of single-family dwellings, fields, and forested land. Mr. and Mrs. Castle received the subject property in 2013. The grantees have not previously received a family transfer parcel, thereby making them eligible for this request. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for the proposed new lots are consistent with the underlying agricultural zoning district. There is an existing 16-foot ingress egress easement that runs along the northern property line, which is being expanded to 50 feet. So therefore, each parcel fronts along the 50-foot ingress egress easement. Additionally, there is adequate area on each parcel for a separate dwelling and drain field. Deeds of gift for the grantees have been prepared in conjunction with this plat, which prohibits the transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt except or in conformity with Sections 31-514B3 of the UDO. Lastly, all parties have completed a sworn affidavit acknowledging that the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantees and to keep the family state within the immediate family. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision, therefore staff recommends approval of FTR 2021-006. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this request? Seeing none, is anyone in opposition to this request? Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, and this one is really directed at Kevin Wyman. And it doesn't really, I mean, it pertains to all applications like this. Since we've been batting around the minor subdivision thing, does this, if this was a parent parcel, would this, with dividing a section out for a family transfer count against a cut as for the minor subdivision?
I know, sir, family transfer subdivisions do not count as cuts against a parcel for the, as it relates to our subdivision ordinance for minor subdivisions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for the approval of FTR 2021-006. Should it be 2022-006? Just a question.
It's 2021.
2021-006.
Yes, I'll confirm, and I apologize because the cover letter does have FTR 2022-006. It is for FTR 2021-006.
Okay, I move for the approval.
Thank you.
Got a second and a motion? Can we have this with a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All in opposition? Commissioners, the device in front of you will not work today, so we'll be doing everything with vocal, okay? I will now open the public hearing. Public hearings are for 15 minutes, 30 minutes, I'm sorry, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal about the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is for public hearing is rezoning request, RZN 2022-012 Conditional, HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant. And before we open this part, I'd like to take a motion from the commissioners to combine item A and B, they're the same property, and we'll get one staff report, but we'll open the public hearing separately.
Don't move.
Second. Got a motion? Got a second from the commissioner? Okay. Back to the first item on the agenda today would be, I'm sorry, vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The rezoning request, RZN 2022-012 Conditional, HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant, and item B is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-025 Nansman Treatment Plant. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning request, RZN 2022-012 Conditional, RSD Nansman Treatment Plant. This is submitted by Benjamin Slaughter with Hazen and Sawyer on behalf of Ayanna Williams, Hampton Road Sanitation District property owner in accordance with Section 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from CP Commerce Park Zoning District to M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District for property located at zoning map 6, parcel 36. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, Zoned CP Commerce Park Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 012 Conditional. There is a companion piece to this, which is the next item, the conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-025. I'll read that caption separately before the public hearing for that item, but they are companion pieces, and Staff Planner Grace Brazil will present a combined staff report on both of these items today for you.
Yes, and thank you. So as stated, this is a conditional rezoning request to change the zoning of parcel 6*36, which will be referred to as the North Parcel for this presentation, from CP Commerce Park Zoning District to M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District to allow for the existing Hampton Road Sanitation District Nansman Treatment Plant located at 6909 Armstead Road, in which will be referred to as the South Parcel for this presentation. It would allow them to expand their operations that are currently taking place. Additionally, conditional use permit, CUP 2022-025, was submitted concurrently for both the North and South Parcel. The rezoning must proceed the CUP in order for the uses proposed on the North Parcel to be allowed. The purpose of the CUP for the North Parcel is to allow three new uses, whereas the proposal for the CUP for the South Parcel is to increase the allowable gallons per day that the existing sewer treatment plant is permitted to treat, in addition to allow recharge wells. So HRSD submitted this rezoning and the concurrent CUP in an effort to achieve their Sustainable Water Initiative for Tomorrow program, which is more commonly known as SWIFT program. The new facilities on both parcels would support the ability to further filter and clean the wastewater to drinking water quality standards before depositing the water back into the underground water table by using the recharge wells. So this is the property that is subject to the rezoning, which is the North Parcel. It is a total of 90 acres in size and is currently forested with private roads that meander through the site. The properties that are subject to the conditional use permit, as stated, are both the North and the South Parcel as depicted before you. The South Parcel is 127 acres in size and is where the existing HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant provides sanitary sewer services to the city of Suffolk. So both properties are bound by the James River to the north, Streeter Creek to the east, a tributary that comes off of Streeter Creek to the south, and then you have Interstate 664 to the west. Vehicular access to the HRSD site is only provided by Armstead Road, which does dead-end at the subject property, unlike Harborview Boulevard and College Drive, which are two of the main growth corridors in the Mixed Use Core Use District. Unlike those, through traffic does not pass through the HRSD site due to that dead-end. So the 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies the, both properties as being located within the Mixed Use Core Use District, which does recommend regional-scale retail, office, research and development, civic buildings, and community facilities. It is important to note that while the Comprehensive Plan states that major infrastructure like pump stations or treatment facilities are not supported in the use district, the HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant has operated on the subject property for many decades to support the growing wastewater treatment needs for the region and is situated in a unique location with limited access and visibility. Sorry, I kind of skipped ahead. So some of the case history for the site, the South Parcel received a conditional use permit in August of 1992 to allow the HRSD wastewater treatment plant capacity to increase from 10 million gallons per day to a total of 30 million gallons per day. The existing SWIFT Research Center received a temporary use permit in 2014 because at the time, there was an instrument to measure wind and to collect data, and it was a temporary use. In 2016, another temporary use permit was issued for a demonstration facility because at the time, again, it was a temporary use. So this is the rezoning exhibit that was submitted for the North Parcel for the requests for it to be rezoned to the M2 zoning district. The rezoning application narrative states that the reason for seeking the request is that the full-scale implementation of the SWIFT program is necessary to enable HRSD to meet its regulatory obligations from the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, and to also support population growth and economic growth within the region. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan provides various themes and policies that encourage adequate public water and sewer services in close proximity to major population centers. The water treatment services that HRSD provides serve not only the city of Suffolk but other localities on the south side and peninsula within Hampton Roads. The HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant is centrally located, serving Smithfield, Isle of Wight, County, and parts of Chesapeake and Portsmouth. Therefore, this project has a regional significance, not only Suffolk residents, businesses, and environment, but also to other surrounding localities. So the various different themes and policies that are set by the Comprehensive Plan, I'm going to list out a few, but it's not exclusive. It's to relate the availability of municipal services and facilities to the location and pace of growth, enhance the wastewater collection system by continuing to support the Hampton Road Sanitation District in their efforts to ensure that the wastewater treatment and conveyance of the city, both current and future, are adequately met, continue to ensure the city's wastewater collection system achieves compliance with all state and federal regulations, ensure the continuation of an environmentally sound and efficient solid waste management system, and to continue to identify projects and promote land use development practices that maintain or improve the quality of the city's drinking water. So the proposal is consistent with the many statements and policies contained within the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, as the request is to expand an existing wastewater treatment plant that will provide additional sanitary sewer services. So the applicant has proffered specific uses to limit the development of the North Parcel. Therefore, the site would not be utilized for any other uses listed in Table 407-1 of the UDO that would typically be permitted in the M2 zoning district. So three of the four proposed uses, which are the sewage treatment plant, utility facilities not specifically enumerated, and outdoor operation and storage that are not present on the Northern Parcel, all require a conditional use permit in the requested M2 zoning district. One of the proposed uses, the research laboratories and development facilities, is allowed by right in the requested M2 zoning district. So the overall intent is to be able to develop the North Parcel similar to the South Parcel so that way they can expand their operations. So this is the conceptual layout that was submitted as part of this CUP for both the North and South Parcel. So the Nansman SWIFT facilities are depicted in yellow on the North Parcel, and then the advanced nutrient reduction improvements are depicted in blue on the South Parcel. Then you also have the SWIFT research facility depicted in green, and that's the facility that originally had various temporary use permits. And then you also have the recharge wells, which were depicted by red dots, which are located on both properties. So this is specifically just the North Parcel, which is proposed to have various SWIFT facilities, such as a SWIFT water pump station, backwash equalization pump stations, gravity thickeners, and a dewatering building. They're also proposing a total of six recharge wells. The various facilities are associated with the processing of wastewater that comes into the site. So for the South Parcel, which is where the existing treatment plant is located, the applicant is proposing advanced nutrient reduction improvements, which are shown in blue. So essentially, this would expand the capacity of the current site from 30 million gallons per day to 50 million gallons per day. Additionally, there are five total recharge wells proposed. And then lastly, the SWIFT facility, like I said, is depicted in green, which does have a recharge well associated with it. So the existing HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant has been operating since the early 1980s, and the request would expand their current operations to meet current and future demands on sanitary sewer services, as well as to meet the obligations from the EPA. The size of the site, along with the established vegetative buffers, will work to minimize any potential noxious conditions that are inherent with a wastewater treatment plant use. The operation of the proposed and expanded usage should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, as these additional facilities would work toward improving the quality of the city's drinking water by providing additional processing of treated water and to replenish it back within the city's groundwater resource rather than discharging it to the James River. And then the city of Suffolk continues to experience both residential and commercial growth. The public interest and welfare should not be compromised by the proposed use at this location, as it would be providing additional sanitary sewer services to the city, as previously stated, by expanding an existing wastewater treatment plant. The property is mostly screened from view by existing dense vegetation along Interstate 664 to the west and dense vegetation to the east and south. That is part of the Resource Protection Area buffer along Streeter Creek, such that the site has limited visibility for commercial uses. The closest residential uses located are the point at Harborview to the west on the other side of Interstate 664, and then you also have Burbage Grant to the east, which would be separated by Streeter Creek. The Department of Public Works Stormwater Engineering Division, as well as the Traffic Division, and then the Department of Public Utilities have all reviewed both the rezoning and CUP application materials and have no concerns with either request. So overall, the conditional rezoning and the CUP request is consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and meets the criteria set forth in the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional rezoning, RZN 2022-012 with the submitted proffers, and conditional use permit, CUP 2022-025 with the conditions recommended by staff. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. I will now open the public hearing on the rezoning request, RZN 2022-012. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair members of the commission, Fred Taylor, the law firm Bush &amp; Taylor, 200 North Main Street here in the city of Suffolk. And I'm here today on behalf of and representing the Hampton Road Sanitation District. And really, while I think ultimately, you know, the ask is for a favorable recommendation to you all, what I really, and I'll say briefly, want to offer to you is, this is a great opportunity, not just for HRSD, but for the city and this region as a whole. And I'm certainly no expert. I'm going to introduce the experts on this project for you as we go through here, who are involved on the environmental and the engineering side. We've got a number of representatives, both from HRSD and Hazen and Sawyer. But to come back to what this opportunity is about, HRSD surprises a lot of people when I tell this, they've been around since 1940. And they have been tasked, and their purpose has been since that time, as a regional group comprised of our Hampton Roads region. Their goal is sort of twofold. It's one of public safety, public protection in regards to the water that we drink, but also as conservators for our waterways, what we put back in our rivers, lakes, and streams. Certainly, that does not happen in a vacuum. It happens in conjunction with local, state, and federal ordinances. You've heard today that this new project, SWIFT, you're going to hear a lot about SWIFT, Sustainable Water Initiative for Tomorrow, this is really part of a much bigger implementation of EPA regulations. And so we do ask for your favorable consideration here. As I mentioned, we've got a number of representatives, both from HRSD and the engineering firm, who are happy to answer any specific questions or concerns that you may have. But with that, I always know to stop while I'm ahead, I will turn my time over to Lauren Zaramsky, HRSD Chief of Design and Construction for the SWIFT project, to discuss this further. And I thank you all for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the commission. Suffolk is home to ITRSD's regionally significant and award-winning Nansman Treatment Facility. We've seen the diagrams of where it exists here today, and it's been in operation since the early 1980s, helping to meet our mission to protect public health in the waters of Hampton Roads by treating wastewater effectively. And so the expansion we're talking about is expanding that efficient and effective wastewater treatment to be able to meet legislative requirements that define how the Commonwealth of Virginia is going to meet its Chesapeake Bay commitment. It's like commitments about removing nitrogen, about removing phosphorus from treated wastewater before discharging to area waterways. The expansion is also implementing decades of effective research on removing nutrients from wastewater. So over the past decade, we've been looking into how to do that more effectively so that each expansion is less impactful while meeting better water quality. And so this includes the implementation of a patented process that we've been working with, with our research partners, labeled Detour, but what it includes is partial denitrification and the use of a novel Anamox bacteria. And what that does is allows us to treat wastewater by removing nutrients, removing a specific nutrient, nitrogen, with 50% less chemicals added and 80% less energy needed to remove that nutrient. And if you look, you may not have noticed, but there's only two new aeration basins that are being added as part of this hydraulic expansion from 30 million gallons per day to 50 million gallons per day. And it's interesting because not only are we reducing the chemical and energy inputs, but we're actually reducing that concrete footprint, not just our carbon footprint, but our concrete footprint, so that we're doing better treatment, reaching lower nutrient goals, in just a smaller amount of physical addition of biological tanks to do that in. That improved water quality target for that endpoint of wastewater treatment sets the stage for us to be able to add advanced water treatment technologies to meet SWIFT. And those advanced technologies include adding ozone treatment, biological filtration, looking at granular activated carbon adsorption, and the use of UV light to continue to add multiple barriers of treatment between that highly-treated wastewater and SWIFT water, which meets drinking water quality requirements, and will actually match the consistency and the requirements of the Potomac Aquifer, so that we're able to provide that as a regional benefit, replacing that groundwater resource that we're pulling out and using as a region. And so we're lucky enough that Suffolk has supported us for the last four years in operating the Research Center. We have over four years of providing advanced water treatment and groundwater recharge and using that operational experience to be able to inform the full-scale design, which is what we're proposing to use the North Parcel for to get started with. So we'll be looking to hire a design-build team that'll help us not do the best efficient footprint layout that we can, so hiring our designer and our contractor all at the same time, finalizing that design and being able to efficiently use site space, such that the ultimate build-out, not only of the wastewater improvements that I was just talking about and the SWIFT improvements that'll come subsequently, will be consistent with the character of the treatment facility that's in place today for Suffolk. So I appreciate the support that Suffolk has for the SWIFT program and for this specific expansion, to be able to provide multiple regional benefits to Suffolk and to Hampton Roads by providing sustainable groundwater source and by protecting local water quality. So with that, happy to answer any questions now or in the future if you have any. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments for the proponents? Okay. Is anyone in the audience who is in opposition to this request? Come up to the podium, please, and give us your name and address, please.
Christopher Dove, 852 Colonel May Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. I have a concern.
Can you remove your mask, please, so we can hear you?
Gladly, thank you. Gladly, thank you. Christopher Dove, A52, Colonel Mead Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. I have no doubt that they have an excellent plan on treating the wastewater and making it fine quality to reintroduce into the environment. My concern is, this site is in incredibly close proximity to the Resource Protection Area, and it's incredible close proximity to the Chesapeake Bay. We have all been aware of the recent changes in climatic changes that increase the severity of weather and the prediction of increased storm surge and severe weather. I'd like to know what precautions that they plan on to take place for these predicted severe weather events. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dove. Do you have a young man?
Thank you for allowing me to opportunity to speak with the chairman and the Suffolk Planning Commission this afternoon, so thank you for that. I have some of the same concerns the gentleman before me had, but--
Just state your name, please.
My name is Al Wade, 6217, Winthorpe Drive in Suffolk. Some of the same concerns the gentleman before me had, but some of them additional is about my concerns about noise and pollution and the potential of the decreased property value, because I own several properties in the area. And also, to the panel that was on, sit on this side, I also had questions regarding, if this is passed, when would the construction begin? How long will the construction last? Where hours will they operate the heavy traffic equipment that they mentioned earlier? And has anyone, how does this affect the sea level rise that we have going on, not only here in Hampton Roads, but on the coastline of Virginia and up and down the coast, of the east coast? So if someone can answer those questions, I'd be greatly appreciative. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, my name is Jacqueline Brooks. I live at 1305 Manning Road. The question I have is based on perhaps faulty hearing of what she had said about there being based on four years of research, whether the research was done at that location, whether she in fact meant to say it was only four years. I just would like to hear an expansion on that, more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Hearing nine. I will close the public hearing. Rebuttal, I'm sorry. One roll.
All right, thank you for the opportunity. I'll provide as much clarification as I can here, starting potentially with the last question and moving forward. Yes, the research that we're talking about was four years of research specifically at the Nanceman location, supported by another two years prior at our York River Treatment Plant in Seaford. So that is six years of body of research of HRSDs doing actual water treatment on the water that's received at our facilities. Those small pilot scale, we're calling them, have continued for those full six years, the demonstration scale at 1 million gallons per day, that's been conducted for the last four years. And that research not only looks at the effectiveness of the treatment technologies using the specific water that's received, but also those offline pilot scale, we're able to actually challenge them, we're able to add chemicals that we make, expect to see pathogens, other potentially concerns that we're able to do in a controlled manner to show that while we are lucky enough to have good quality water here in Suffolk, we're able to see that if it was challenged, those treatment processes would perform as well. Besides HRSD's site-specific research, we're building on a body of knowledge where multiple utilities across the country and across the world are using these types of treatment technologies to provide water reused from wastewater treatment as a viable water source throughout the globe. The next question prior to that was the discussion about, questions on construction. The expectation is the wastewater upgrades that are needed to be able to meet the Commonwealth's requirement timeline for nutrient reduction going into the Chesapeake Bay. Those treatment upgrades would be able to start this spring, pretty much as soon as we moved through all of the appropriate processes and Suffolk site plans and be in line with all of that, we would start construction in early 2023. That project would extend till the end of 2025. Overlapping that would be the development of the design of the subsequent SWIFT facilities. That construction, we're looking to hope, start in 2024, that would end up by 2028. So the facilities would be under construction for the next five years, starting in 2023 and ending in 2028, ending with a consistent character of facilities that are already being operated here. So the deep site, sound, smells, that type of activity would not be dramatically different from the space that we're operating now and have been operating for the last number of decades. The first question was about Chesapeake Bay and the concerns about, not only, and I'm gonna interpret it as best as I can here, not only about how we're using the site, but also answer how we're impacting Chesapeake Bay and the concerns about sea level rise overall. And so, on the site, as the maps show not here, we're considering not only the topography of the site, but the RPA buffers and the requirements that we have for not building in those buffers and those protected areas. So we'll be back from any of the water's edge and the lower-lying wetlands. Those are areas where we will not be developing. We'll be looking to build on the higher ground and the more protected areas internal to the site. Additionally, overall, the intent of SWIFT is to address the fact that water withdrawals from the Potomac Aquifer are causing about 50% of the reason why the Hampton Roads region is sinking. So 50% of the reason why we're sinking is because of over-water withdrawal of the Potomac Aquifer, and we have the ability to safely implement a water cycle that allows us to put drinking water quality water back into the aquifer. And we've shown through both USGS measurements at our Suffolk site and also in other places throughout the world, that there's the potential for rebound or slowing that subsidence and potentially minimizing its impacts. There's many HRPDC estimates on where we could be going if we do nothing, related to the going being sinking another foot or so, if we do nothing about the overwithdrawal of water from the Potomac Aquifer. And so, the project overall is looking to be smart in how we use the site and protective of the buffers around that parcel, but also the outcome of the project is to be able to slow land subsidence and reduce the impact of overuse of the Potomac Aquifer as an outcome of successful SWIFT treatment. I believe that answers the questions that I had copied here, if the Commission has any others.
Thank you. We'll save those after we close the public hearing.
Yep. I'm sorry, I heard one more about whether or not it addresses storm surge and severe weather impacts. There is really no operation of SWIFT that changes one way or the other related to it. So we've, yeah, I appreciate the time.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner, I will now close the public hearing. Questions and comments from the Commissioners before we may have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of, these are educational things for me as much as anything. I think probably Laura, I believe it's Laura?
Yes, just a couple of questions. I guess I represent the Holy Neck Barrel, which is basically farmers, a lot of farmland, et cetera. And so, the aquifer, anytime you're talking about the aquifer, it gets our attention. I did read probably back when the, when you first started the process of injecting the water back into the aquifers. It was very, very interesting. I think it was a Sunday edition of the Pilot, and it was a big article that talked about it. Has any studies been done here locally to see what the impact on the level of the aquifer, has it been affected? Because this has been going on, what, a couple of years?
Yeah, we've been actively recharging the Potomac Aquifer since 2018.
2018, okay, so a little longer than that. Any studies, anything to show the impact that it's already had?
So there's two ways that we've been monitoring it. One of the most important ways is that extensometer, that piece of equipment that actually, the USGS, the Federal Geological Survey, they're actually operating that piece of equipment. And it's basically a very simple but very robust. They drill down to bedrock, and below us in Suffolk, that's about 2,000 feet below the ground we're sitting on, installing a rod down to that bedrock land, and there's a table at ground surface. And it has the sensitivity to measure millimeter-type movements of the ground surface relative to bedrock, so you take away other potential noise related to it. And what they've shown, that's about 1,000 feet away from our single 1-MGD recharge facility, and right here in Suffolk, all of this research is happening right here. We're able to show, as we were recharging the aquifer, you can see small amounts of recovery in the ground surface. At one point, we needed to remove some of the water back out. We pulled that back out. You can actually see it then compact again. So you see the sensitivity between the operation of our facility and that extensometer. What we've also seen is now that it's been four years of operation, it's now still at the millimeter scale, we're talking really small amounts of ground surface, but in those four years, we've seen a general positive trend, as we've now put in over 645 million gallons of water back into the Potomac Aquifer. And the Potomac Aquifer is a huge water-bearing structure, really low below ground. And so, the interesting piece is while we're continuing to put that much water in, the second part of the monitoring that we've done is that it doesn't travel very far. It's actually the pressure recovery that's impacting the extensometer. No SWIFT water has made it that far. It's actually taken about eight months for it to move 400 feet away from that initial recharge well. And we have a lot of research students that are working, applied research students at the research center, and so there's numerical modeling on how it moves just from the recharge well, 50 feet, to see that play and just really the nuances that happen in such a heterogeneous underground structure. So we, to summarize, there's an extensometer that's looking at ground surface recovery, and we're also looking at the movement and the quality of the water as the aquifer actually improves the quality the longer it's in there.
Very good, thank you for that. And I guess my second question is on the other end of that, and that is, there is a residue that's left after the treatment takes place of the sewage. I know it used to be you could pick up some of the, I guess, sludge or whatever for gardens, et cetera. What is the, how is the sludge, that's all the remainder, how is that processed and what happens to that now?
So we have residuals and biosolids are the area that you're referencing. It's the solids that are taken out during treatment, and that consists of, a lot of it's carbon, it's a lot of nutrients and organics that are related to what we're placing into the water and sending it to the treatment facilities. HRSD has numerous facilities for treatment all over the region, and so we have a strategy that looks at the solids collected and treated from all over the region and our potential uses. There's incineration in some locations, though not in Suffolk. We have a process called, it's THP, and I'm gonna have to think, which are hydraulically or thermologically treating solids, to actually split it up and remove more pathogens and more organics, so that that becomes a soil amendment product. And we also do composting with a vendor that provides composting for any regional authority, not just us specifically, and we contract with that composting vendor. So we have a portfolio of the ways that we deal with the solids that are removed from wastewater treatment. So in Suffolk, we do digestion to further reduce the amount of them, and then it's typically with a vendor for composting.
All right, thank you very much.
Commissions, any other questions?
I have one. You said that drawing from the aquifer was responsible for 50% of the land sinking. What's taking, what's causing the other 50%?
So we'll have to stretch my geologic knowledge here, but what I understand is that as we're going back to the Ice Age and the movement of tectonic plates and glaciers across all of North America, and as the glaciers recide, there is some change in how the tectonic plates actually rebound and change after those happen, and some movement related to it. So it's not an anthropomorphic impact, it's related to natural geologic activity. So that's my understanding of where the other 50% comes from, but I can only impact 50%, so I've been focusing on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissions? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Mazzio one quick question? Mr. Mazzio, my question is, we would, if we approved this, we would rezonate this from CP to heavy industrial. What are some uses of CP? I'm not very familiar with that zoning.
Hold on, let me go and get my used table.
While she's getting the used table, I'll kind of set the table. The CP is a pretty specific zoning district. We've seen it created as a part of the 1999 UDO creation. A lot of areas that were around freeway uses had this designation. We haven't seen a ton of success with it, because it is pretty specialized. You're talking, envisioned for larger, kind of single, one, two, three-story office building, parks, and much of it just has not been developed. But that's primarily the purpose of it, is a kind of specialized office and office-type retail.
Yeah, and to add to what Kevin was saying, based off of Table 406-1 of the uses that are permitted within the CP zoning district, there's a lot of just institutional, permitted-by-right uses, such as schools, as well as different medical-related, you know, office uses.
Second question, on the western side of the, I guess that's 664, how much CP is on the western side?
Let me flip back there. I don't have an exact acreage.
And third question, my final question. The rezoning would allow for, in the model that we saw, would allow for an expansion of a new SWIFT facility in the northern part?
Yes.
And make sure I understand, but there are some improvements that was talked about, that's in blue and green, in the southern part of the parcel. This rezoning would not affect that, right?
Correct.
Is that part of the CUP?
Yep, so the conditional use permit applies to both the north and the southern parcel. So the rezoning only applies to the north parcel, to establish the various uses that you typically would see in need for the various different treatment plant operations.
But currently, right now, there is the M2 zoning adjacent to the Burbage Grant community up in northern Suffolk right now.
Yes.
So even if we rezoned the land, it still would be consistent with what's already there now?
Yes, correct. So this southern parcel is currently zoned M2, heavy industrial, so if the north parcel were to be approved for the rezoning, it would be extending that existing zoning district to the north.
Okay, thank you. Commissions, question? Mr. Chairman, with that being said, I move for the approval of RZN 2022-012.
Second the motion. I also like to make a comment, as in past rezoning requests where it's been dealing with CP to anything else. I've generally had a difficulty with that, just on some personal thoughts that I have. But in this particular case, as was just pointed out, obviously, this is just really extending the M2, it's an adjacent piece of property, so I don't have a problem with
Any other discussion or motion? If so, Mr. Wyman, would you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwan?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Half the ballot is won. Now we're going to move to the public hearing on the conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-025 for the Nansman Treatment Plant. Mr. Wyman, would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-025, Nansman Treatment Plant, submitted by Benjamin Slaughter, Hazen &amp; Sawyer, applicant on behalf of Ayana Williams, Hampton Roads Sanitation District Property Owner in accordance with Sections 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a sewage treatment plant, utility facility, not specifically enumerated, and outdoor operations and storage on property located on 6909 Armstead Road, zoning map six, parcels one D and 36. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, Zoned M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District and CP Commerce Park Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-025. As we stated, Ms. Brazil captured both the rezoning and the CUP in her presentation last time. After the conclusion of this public hearing, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have related to this application.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. I will now open the public hearing on condition use permit request, CUP 2022-025. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Didn't get rid of me too quickly. Mr. Chairman, again, Fred Taylor, on behalf of the Hampton Roads Sanitation District. Obviously, you've heard Ms. Brazil's excellent staff report in this regard. We are again asking for the commission's favorable recommendation with the recommended conditions that are enclosed in the report. I would ask that you essentially incorporate our prior comments. There's no need to go back into the explanation verbatim, but to consider our prior comments in regard to the rezoning. And certainly, if there are any other specific questions that the commission may have in regard to the conditional use permit, we will be happy to answer those at the appropriate time. And we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Are there anyone here? Does anyone else like to make a comment in favor of this request? Here are none. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this request? Mr. Dunn?
Christopher Dove, 852, Colonel Lee Drive, Suffolk. I would just like to make, given the response to my question, there is no plan to mitigate any storm surge or severe weather events in the future, given the climatic changes that we're having. I'd like to suggest that the council or the board go ahead and recommend that additional condition, that engineering studies and engineering plans be made to take advantage of or prevent any accidental sewage discharge because of those occurrences. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition? Here are none. Rebuttal? Hearing no rebuttal? Okay. Not hearing any rebuttal, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Here we go. Laura, if I could get you to come back just one second. In response to Mr. Dove's question, and I can't recall, I did ride by the site, but I can't recall the elevations. In the, I'm sure you had to do engineering studies for this project going forward. And I would presume that, based on the pictures, that the site is located, it's not really adjacent to the river. It's really adjacent to the existing facility closer to the backside. So far as elevation standpoints, did the engineering take into consideration anticipated sea level raising and, as you mentioned, the sinking of the property? Was that covered in the engineering studies that were done?
Yep, I'm going to address that and potentially, Ben, ask you to fill in if I miss anything. So across HRSD, we are aware of the concerns that Mr. Dunn is mentioning and have actually commissioned a study, not just to look specifically at Nansman, but to look across HRSD's facilities at the potential impact of relative sea level rise out until the 2050, 2080 timeline. They're grim overall. But what we're looking at is, we have an engineering consultant that looks at various projections, low, high, and super-high level projections of potential. We're using HRPDC information to baseline where that could potentially impact. So to answer your question most specifically, on our Nansman facility, both at the existing south parcel and across the north parcel, we have various elevations of potential future sea level rise conditions. And so what I'm going to ask Ben is, can you mention what the elevation is at the site right now?
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members, I'm Ben Slaughter with Hazen &amp; Sawyer. So as Lauren has mentioned, HRSD has invested in doing sea level rise studies on this particular property. And what we are requiring with the design-build projects that are already underway and will be happening in the future is we are requiring some of the critical infrastructure facilities to be elevated based on that study so that operations will be maintained in some of these future sea level rise scenarios. So this is written in the design documents for these projects to make sure that critical electrical, mechanical facilities, that those are elevated and contemplate sea level rise conditions, in particular a four-and-a-half-foot sea level rise condition.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions where they were at the?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question. Piggybacking, want to piggyback. If I looked at the, it's not on the screen anymore, but you know, closest to the buffer, there were wells. I guess those red dots, it was those recharging wells. My question is, you know, taking Mr. Dove's scenario, can you explain to me how the recharging wells, again, work? And would sea level rise affect the wells itself?
So the first portion of it, the recharge wells are drilled down from ground level. In the area, the research center currently has a well drilled down 1,420 feet below grade. The Potomac Aquifer is nowhere in the first 500 feet. Those are actually cased. It's a solid pipe going through with some protection to bypass all of the superficial aquifers and the other layers of aquifers before then. So once we're beyond 500 feet, it's actually, as we're drilling, we're working with the drilling team to identify where the most sand is. Because the Potomac Aquifer is a mixture of layers of sand and clay, sandy clays, clay sands, all the way through. And so at the places where there'll likely be the most ability for water to leave the well and work its way into the formation, those are screened. It's just very tight metal-wound wire screens. So that makes its way all the way down from sub-500 feet below grade down to, say, 1420 below grade. What we actually do is because the pressure in the Potomac Aquifer has dropped so far that we actually have to provide back pressure to keep the water from cascading down the well. We intentionally, we intentionally actually, like I said, put some back pressure so that we're softly providing water and allowing it to migrate through the screens into the annular space between the granules, sands and clay granules within the Potomac Aquifer. So backing up through there, there's a pump station that'll be on-site. After all of the treatment is complete, it'll be brought to a pump station that pressurizes a system of individual lines and pipes out to each one of these wellheads. So the pressure for any wellhead is provided at the singular pump station. And as I said, there's a valve that kind of keeps it from cascading down hundreds of feet below grade before it intersects with the water table, which is now about 100 feet below grade. How sea level rise could potentially in the distant future impact that is that where the recharge well sticks up a little bit above grade, say it's a couple feet, maybe to my hip height or so, there's actually a concrete casing around there. So above grade, some potential nuisance flooding or some other water wouldn't impact that until it was significant for the whole region to be an issue at that point. The mechanical equipment at a wellhead is actually a pump that sits up on top of that pedestal to, on a daily basis, pull water back in to clear the screens. There's no actual pumping in at that location. Like I said, the pressures from the singular swift facility, there's some electrical equipment at that site, but as Ben mentioned, all of that's up at a panel on a wall higher up above the ground surface. So the way that our facilities are designed is that they're intended to be critical equipment higher up off the ground to not be impacted by nuisance flooding. And again, if there's a general overall sea level rise issues for the region, I think we have some regional concerns on where we're placing humans and infrastructure at that point. We're kind of outside of that range of concern at this point.
And make sure, and currently on the southern, what we call in the southern parcel?
Correct.
There are wells there now, right?
So we have one full-scale sized well that is complete and in operation. We also have a small test well. We've been recharging through a smaller 12-inch well for the past four years. We're now working through a 36-inch well. So there are two operating recharge wells on-site at the dot that's next to the green facilities, which are the research center.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Motion?
I heard the call. Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of CUP 2022-025 with the conditions.
Second from Commissioner Hicks. Any discussion in the motion? Wyman, you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwan?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks? Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations. This will go to City Council on 118, 2023. First time I said that for a while. Okay. Thanks for your, oh, your input today. The next item on our agenda is the conditional use request, CUP 2022-030, 7622 South Key Road. Mr. Wyman, would you read the caption, please?
Yes. This is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-030, 7622 South Key Road, submitted by Enid Copeland, applicant and property owner on behalf of Hilda Abram and Enrico Copeland, property owners in accordance with Section 31306, 31406, and 31801 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to restore a non-conforming residential structure to an extent of greater than 50% of its replacement cost on property located at 7622 South Key Road, zoning map 50, parcel 82D. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Rural Agricultural Use District. And when you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-030. Staff Planner Shannon Wolf will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As Mr. Wyman stated, this is a conditional use permit to request to renovate an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling by more than 50% of its replacement cost. The affected property is in the Rural Agricultural Use District according to the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The subject property is located at 7622 South Key Road. It is Zoned A Agricultural, and the surrounding area is comprised of other residential or farmland properties also zoned agricultural. The applicant seeks to obtain this CUP in order to replace the well, roof, windows, sheet rock, plumbing, electrical, and the HVAC system. The assessed value for the existing structure is $71,000 per the City of Suffolk Real Estate Assessor's Office, and the proposed renovations are going to cost $169,000, which exceeds the 50% of the structure's assessed value. The existing two-story home was constructed around 1949 and features approximately 1,143 square feet, three bedrooms and one bathroom. The applicant proposes the applicant proposes to add one additional full bathroom. Thank you. Sorry. The applicant proposes to add one additional full bathroom in order to have two full bathrooms. The existing structure is non-conforming as it relates to the required minimum front setbacks of 50 feet and a minimum side setback of 20 feet in accordance with the UDO. The survey provided by the applicant depicts a side setback of about 12 feet on the right side of the property and the front setback of about 10 feet. The subject property currently has a gravel driveway, which has sufficient parking spaces as outlined in the UDO. Here you have the proposed floor plan, which depicts a three-bedroom, two-bath home. Staff finds that this conditional use permit meet the criteria set forth in the Unified Development Ordinance. The Department of Public Works Engineering, Public Utilities, and Traffic have no objections to this request. The renovated dwelling will assist in improving the property values and appearance of the neighborhood, which should in turn enhance the enjoyment of the residents in this community. Lastly, the property as renovated will continue to be in keeping with the character and development pattern of the neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-030 with the conditions noted in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I will now open the public hearing on condition use request, CUP 2022-030. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Mr. Chair, my name is Enid Copeland. I live at 6225 Leeford Road, Suffolk, Virginia, in the Holland area, 23437. We are the owners of this property, non-conforming structure that has been questioned this afternoon. We would appreciate that you will give consideration, positive consideration to our requests. It's a non-conforming residential structure at the present time. Even though it's non-conforming, it's still costing us in excess of $1,000 worth of taxes every year. So we are asking that this Planning Commission would consider us improving this dwelling, this non-conforming dwelling at the present time. It's in a very, I would say, outstanding community with the dwellings out in that area valued anywhere from $300,000. The person who presently owned it lost his life at this dwelling, had a fire. And this, we are, it's a family-owned dwelling at the present time, and we plan to keep it family-owned. own. So if you would vote to allow us to improve it, we appreciate it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. We have questions after we close the public hearing, if there is any.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does anyone else speak in favor of this request?
Once again, Christopher Dove, 852 Colonel Lee Drive. I feel compelled to speak only because of my strong belief in the setback requirements, as Mr. Wyman will tell you. In this particular case, though, I consider since the historic nature of this building and the fact that it's been this way for a while, I think it's well within this county or planning commission authority to go ahead and change or waive those requirements, and I strongly suggest that you do. Thank you.
Is anyone else to speak in favor? Hearing none. Is anyone in the audience to speak in opposition? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of CUP 2022-030 with the necessary conditions.
This motion for the commission. We got a second from Commissioner Hicks. Any discussion in motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a comment that this location on South Key Road, I would imagine that one of the non-conforming issues was the setback, and probably it met their criteria before they widened South Key Road some years ago. So I have no problem with this whatsoever.
Now, the discussion in motion? Call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kreekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Copeland. You have the favor of this request from this body, and it will go to City Council on January 18th, 2023. Thank you. Thank you. Merry Christmas, you also. Next item on our agenda is the Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2022-006. Mr. Wyman's going to push the button and do everything.
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance text amendment, OTA 2022-006, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 4, zoning, Section 31411(c), lot patterns. The purpose of this text amendment is to update and refine the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance, due to a change in circumstance. So this is a pretty simple ordinance text amendment. It's essentially modifying just one piece of the ordinance located in Article 4, Section 31411, use patterns, which contains alternative zoning bulk requirements for non-conventional subdivisions and lots. This one in particular impacts our cluster subdivision standards. Part of these requirements and/or reduction of those requirements includes alternative minimum lot size setbacks, frontage, and impervious cover requirements for conservation, estate, hamlet, cluster, zero lot lines. There are several different use patterns contained within the section of the ordinance. Column B in this table, the table impacted by this proposed amendment, Section 31411(c), lists alternative requirements applicable to such non-conventional developments relative to these zoning bulk requirements for conventional developments, which are contained within our dimensional and density regulations in Table 4071, which is in Section 31407 of the Unified Development Ordinance. So this impacts our cluster subdivision, and this is more of a clarification, because cluster subdivisions by their very nature are flexible. Right now, within the cluster subdivision pattern, there's no minimum lot size required. There's no frontage, minimum frontage required. And it's long been the interpretation of the section that this includes setbacks. And with that, with the cluster subdivision, you're, I think, a good example of what you're gaining with a cluster subdivision is, one, a great deal of open space associated with these. So the increase in open space that's held in, at that point, a passive deed of easement by the city reduces the developable area of a development. The density remains the same regardless. The number of units will remain the same, but clustering them in a certain section, one allows for that increased open space, but it also allows for the clustering of infrastructure. So at that point, the city and ultimately the taxpayers are then responsible for less linear feed of infrastructure, whether that be sanitary sewer, water, the road system. So there are a lot of benefits to this. But with that, with the clustering, with the smaller lot size, a traditional setback within the underlying zoning district may not be feasible. So traditionally, the city's interpreted the section to really just allow for a 15-foot building separation between uses. This code amendment would formalize that in the Unified Development Ordinance. So right now, in column B identifies the modifications allowed for cluster subdivisions and lot patterns as none. No other guidance or regulatory flexibility is provided in this section for cluster subdivisions. We talked about the flexibility and the explicit allowance that no minimum lot size is required, no minimum frontage is required, but that is not memorialized in the form of a setback. So staff's desire to amend the ordinance for clarity in this regard will allow for dwellings on cluster lots would have to meet specific reasonable minimum setbacks as it relates to the lot flexibility they're granted. And this is very difficult to read, but essentially, this would reduce the, this would establish a minimum front setback in the cluster subdivision pattern of 15 feet and a minimum side setback of seven and a half feet, which would allow for that minimum 15-foot building separation. The minimum rear setback would refer back to the underlying zoning district. Traditionally, that is, that's generally 30 feet or more. So that is what this code amendment does. This is an opportunity for clarification as it relates to how these provisions have been interpreted in the past, and that concludes my presentation on this item. I'll be happy to address any questions you have as it relates to this proposed text amendment at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2022-006. Who would like to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Who would like to speak in opposition?
Christopher Dove, 852 Colonel Lee Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. I am the reason that he is amending this request. If you will look at section, table 31407, section, you'll note that it states that these are required, dimensional requirements, not guarantees that they can be met. It explicitly states that. In addition to that, it states that unless there's an explicit exemption, that you cannot ignore them. Mr. Wyman is incorrect when he states that there is no requirement for a frontage, minimum frontage. There is a requirement for random frontage. There is also a requirement for minimum lot width. He also neglected to state that. We've had discussions with this. Some of you may have known that I have been in correspondence with the City Council and the city attorney about the unlawful disregard for UDO Sections 31407 through 411. Mr. Wyman admitted to me that the city has used cluster developments optioned to circumvent the UDO dimensional regulations. I have known this for years, but lacked standing to challenge it until now. This is a final plat for West Haven Lake, Section 8. It shows that the city has authorized, where am I? Okay. It shows that the dimensional requirements for front setbacks are 30 feet instead of the regulation 35 feet. It also shows the side setbacks are 10 feet instead of regulation 15 feet. Additionally, the lot widths with Mr. Wyman said are not exempt, are not in fact explicitly exempt, and they were there at 80 feet instead of regulation 100 feet, as well as the lot frontage requirements that are as low as 70 feet instead of the regulation 80 feet. Mr. Wyman admitted that the zoning administrator claiming that these were zero line setbacks was false. These are not zero line setbacks. If you look at the plats, you will see that these are conventional setbacks, 10-foot on either side. A zero lot would have zero on one side and a minimum of 15 on the other. These do not. He told me that he had a plan to fix the criminal violations of the UDO. I was pleased, but apparently, this is his plan. Instead of enforcing the UDO, as it appears that he wants the commission, or this commission, to become complicit in the unlawful act that he's in partaking in. He seeks to codify cluster developments after the fact, as it means to circumvent the dimensional regulations for the UDO. He wants to change the lot pattern modifications from cluster to, from none, as he showed, to 7.5-foot side setbacks and 15-foot front setbacks, which would create, by the right of equivalent of rezoning residential, commercial developments anywhere in the city. So if you want to go ahead and have a claim of cluster development, you can, in RE, you can go ahead and have these reduced setbacks or any other zoning district, completely upending the zoning dimension requirements of the UDO. In fact, the 15-foot front setback is even smaller than the residential urban specification, which is 20 feet. Further evidence of this conspiracy to violate the UDO is that the two-acre BMP and impound easements included in the open space calculation for this subdivision are included in the calculation for density. Mr. Wyman permitted the destruction. In addition, since cluster developments are supposed to preserve forest or agricultural land, Mr. Wyman allowed them to destroy two acres of forested land on this parcel for the BMP. Instead of preserving forest land, they destroyed it. So I recommend, instead of this poor attempt to justify unlawful acts, just to make cluster developments expressly exempt from all UDO regulations, go ahead and change the incentive zoning densities from 130 to go up to 200 or to 500, so that we can go ahead and just let developers develop all they want, anywhere they want, because that's what this will do. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I want to give all holiday wishes to everybody. Just want to stop right there and send that blessing out there. So my name is Kelly Hengler, and I live at 9345 Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia. I don't think anybody in the City of Suffolk doubts that the Village of Cretan and Eclipse knows very well about infill developments and cluster subdivisions. When the grandfathering occurred, as we needed to recover economically after the 2008 burst, apparently there were many, many applications that had been put on file, and one of the key terms that kept coming up, which I'm concerned for this ordinance, and I would ask the commission to please consider a number of points that I will make, to not, to go back and review a few things before considering, because I do know what has been brought to you by staff is what you're considering. And so what the citizens would like to bring to you is that when those by right plats, quite unfortunately, by right is, and I don't mean to use controversial words, but it's abused. We have our rights here in Virginia. We're the ones who wrote the Bill of Rights and the Constitution originally. We're in the Virginia colony. That is our history. That is Onansman County in Suffolk. We have 400-year-old aged infrastructure here, and we are settled along every waterway that you possibly can have and every creek. And so some of these places and these parcels, how they were built, and the villages and the towns, unincorporated, incorporated, are unique here in Suffolk. And I appreciate you, Mr. Wyman. So I've said to you before, we will have our comments, but we will not be controversial to each other, okay? As we have marched forward, 400 years later, in the year 2006, the City of Suffolk made a step, and that step has cost us dearly. They took over VDOT, and I don't know who was here on the commission at the time or simply living here, because in fact, the City of Suffolk only needed to maintain that infrastructure that was the 50 square miles around the actual City of Suffolk. The rest of it, going backwards and forward in time, had been considered because we were actually aged infrastructure from the Virginia colony, for goodness sakes, okay? And so all of outward, where our farms grew and our small settlements, et cetera, and so on, once we went into the merger mode, okay, the City of Suffolk did, we've turned into this hyper-urbanized idea where we forget that we have villages that were here since the beginning of the Virginia colony. Those roads were paved over as needed, but when we took over in 2006, we didn't put a stipulation, a proper or anything negotiation with VDOT and say, no, VDOT, we're going to be smart like Olive White County, and we're going to turn around and tell you that we've been hit by an unfunded mandate to also adopt the MS4 stormwater system. Bringing those two pieces on board at the same time, VDOT, and overtaking every bit of pipe and culvert and concrete box next to whatever road, at the same time, at the very same time, is having to adopt MS4 and start parsing out stormwater fees to everybody that's been collected, okay? Means that we took on every bit of everything that VDOT was caring for and maintaining, carte blanche. We're stuck with it, and we're stuck in 2006. So here come cluster subdivisions. Anything, three houses or more can be used as an infill development. I'm very clear on that because I know the open space and conservation purpose that this particular type of cluster subdivision was intended to have. Over and over again, we find exceptions. We'll just go ahead and allow one more house. We have a cluster subdivision in Eclipse that we tried with everything we had, and I'm talking land use attorneys, I'm talking bring in and review so we can get the best output, where we have a stormwater pipe that goes right over the oysters in the Chucky Tuck Creek, which I will tell you right now, unless we do something immediate and robust, that creek will be the next moniker for the City of Suffolk because it will be fully condemned. It is shameless. That stormwater pipe shouldn't have not gone in there. We paid good money to pay an outside firm to offer, if you simply do something different, do some rain gardens, et cetera, we might even try to help you out, developer. We didn't try to adjoin or stop that development in court. We were trying to get the best outcome. No, 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 no. Two words, by right. I am so fed up as a constitutionalist, as a veteran, as a healthcare provider, from somebody barking by right at me. There are more considerations for my patient than did my patient reel in the door today. Therefore, it has rights. And that is what we have. We have a dying river and a dying creek because waivers and exemptions, because infill development somebody has to do is say by right, and people jump. We know that's a right, but it doesn't mean everything else is removed. Add to that, stormwater pipe right into Bleakhorn Creek, also condemned, right over our oyster beds, right now. Sight unseen to this commission, sight unseen to our council. So what is this infill development that's supposed to be of open space, that is supposed to be leaving ground where there's undeveloped but can be built, therefore to be leaving ground where there's undeveloped but can be built, therefore it is conserved? Look at the calculations, please, ladies and gentlemen, go back and look at projects that have not even come under your nose, and you're going to find out that there are exemptions and waivers beyond the authority that is allowed to the staff of the Planning Department and Public Works and their predecessors. Mr. Wine was not part and parcel to that, nor was our current deputy city manager. We don't want to continue forward either, because I've had it heard said that the word came forward, this is what we've done in the past with cluster subdivisions. No ma'am, no sir, we're in 2022. We are 78th in the nation in growth. Thank you very much. We can do better because we have more people as well. So my point is this, that I have been part of the coastal resilience master plan, and I'll let you know that the VDOT has come out with its own coastal resilience as of November 2022, right? They've had to come up with their own resilience plan, as HRSD was just up here mentioning to you. They have to do their own resilience as well, because they're affecting 97 acres over there, and all of North Suffolk has covered over 70% impervious surface in our lifetime. Unheard of, it's been converted. So what are we doing with the stormwater, still dated from 2006, and the villages they were all met with under Urban Institute 20 years ago? Every one of the villages, Oakland, Chukituck, Cretan and Eclipse, Huntersville, even downtown Hall Neighborhood, no one has returned to these areas to discuss one iota about the worsening stormwater, the worsening, drenching, soaked, high-rise and ground, the grandmothers and the grandfathers. So I'm here for them, and I'm here to tell you that in the areas that we have these villages and what I have seen happen, when somebody wants to say, let it rip, I put in an application and went past the city of Suffolk, it's the UDO. Well, hey, hey, UDO, I love Suffolk, if y'all hadn't noticed. I was born and raised here. But I'm seeing some opportunities that are being abused, straight out abused and beyond your viewpoint, because once this passes, without any extra look at what has the Suffolk come forward, they did not have a floodplain manager, and to the group of us who went and sat with the state and went to the Dewberry meetings downtown, et cetera, and so on, wanted to learn, no controversy, and we found out the city of Suffolk, actually, the last planning director put a title after his name he didn't have. He wasn't a certified floodplain manager, until the current one person who's in Public Works right now, city of Suffolk didn't have a floodplain manager, means everything that has gone through this city prior to that one staff member coming on in 2022 has gone past you without a certified floodplain manager looking at it. And we're still evolving the resilience, so I want to inform you of that. I want to bring you to what it is that we know, and I'll end with this. DCR also has a dam program right now, because we have a lot of regulatory 2015 pieces in Suffolk, even though they belong to Portsmouth, that are not up to regulatory. And all of those rural conservation areas that wish to be impacted by these infill developments that do not fit the design, make us look like we're Krakolaka panorama city, California, which means stuff just built on top of each other because somebody put in an application. No view shed, no retention of our historic. The city of Suffolk is about to enter in Virginia 250, the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution, and we are standing out front already. We have one organization recognized and invited to become part of the Virginia 250. That is a massive, massive point of attention with the American Trail, Heritage Trail that comes right through Chukituck as well. We have many fortuitous opportunities, ladies and gentlemen. I ask you to send this back to staff. Allow yourself to be able to look at everything that's come forward from VDOT resilience to the city's own resilience plan, which is not met with any of the communities as required by the state. I'll just give you that disclaimer. It's going to end up over at DCR, and DCR is going to kick it back and go, why didn't you meet with the communities? Right? But you have that that's coming from Timmins. When that piece came forward from Timmins, I reviewed it, and the city had not sent them the 2035 comprehensive plan. I said, could you please let, at least have them the right document? So I haven't seen that since. I appreciate you, but there are multiple, multiple documents that are on the table right now. Thank you very much.
That concludes the time for opposition. Staff or the attorney have any comments for rebuttal?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, since there was some questions about legality of this, is this something just that our city legal staff has reviewed this for okay?
So the issue of setbacks for cluster subdivisions have come up over different city attorneys, so yes, the office has looked at this. To start at the beginning, because of the population growth of the city between the 2010 and 2020 census, the General Assembly mandates that we provide a provision for cluster subdivisions. We have to have it. At a minimum, it has to be, it can only be approved by staff, and there cannot be public hearings on these types of development. Additionally, we can't put stricter regulations on a cluster subdivision than we do on any other subdivision, but you can put looser regulations on cluster subdivisions. The General Assembly put this as a way for fast-growing localities to have a way to continue growth while preserving open space. So it is meant to be something that has limited oversight by the locality and is supposed to be a little bit easier to use than a standard subdivision. As you work through what our cluster subdivision requirements are, you start, as the UDO dictates, you start with the definitions, and so you read the whole thing as a whole, not picking out parts and pieces. The definition of a cluster subdivision says that they are not subject to the lot size and lot dimension requirements of the UDO, which has left staff with applying their own interpretation, because the staff is the one approving this. What this particular provision does is limit some of that discretion so that there are clear identifiable setbacks for cluster subdivisions, instead of staff deciding, are we going to do this or are we going to do that? I think what they've set forth here is what they've done typically, they've always done it this way, but this provides a clearer understanding of what is going on with the approval of cluster subdivisions.
Any other discussion before a motion is made?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve OTA 2022-006 for approval.
Second. Second, where? Applemine. Any discussion to motion?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. The text amendment, text ordinance amendment will go to City Council on 1/18/2023 with the recommendation of this body for approval. Are there any old business that need to be addressed? Under the new business, we have Item A, Staff Report Presentation on the Proposed Capital Improvement, Mrs. Hanson. There, there she is. Oh, she can write a lot of papers with her.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. I will apologize in advance, I am coming down with a cold, so I'm a little sniffly today, but we will get through this. I am here this afternoon to present to you the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024 through 2023 and the related information that is contained therein. I will go through this as quickly as I can, but there is a lot of information, and I'll start first by thanking Commissioner Creekmore and Commissioners Eberwine for serving on our CIP Subcommittee this year and for being helpful in that regard and attending meetings where I talked about this a lot. So to start off with here, you've got the first five years of the plan. While it is a 10-year plan, we really do focus on the first five years of the plan. As we all know, things change rather rapidly in a growing community and priorities can change, so it's a 10-year plan with a focus on the first five years, and then we really dial into the first year, because once approved, the first year of the plan becomes part of our proposed capital budget in the coming spring. So to show you what we've got here, this is all of our funds with all of our projects in totals for the first five years. You can see in that far yellow column that the total of all funds, all projects for the first five years is $381.9 million, broken down by fund. You'll see at the bottom there that we've got our geo-debt capacity at $30 million per year and that we have reached that $30 million number for each of the first five years. This slide is showing you what those expenditures break down by category for all, for just the general government. I'm going to go back for just one second and point out to you, the last line before the totals there is the projects for just the general government. That's where we do our schools, our transportation, our public buildings and facilities, those types of things, and you can see that the five-year plan on that is $270.7 million. And the next couple of slides is really going to focus on that $270.7 million. So back to this pie chart, this is that $270 million broken down by function. You can see that 43% of those projects are transportation projects, 24% are schools, public safety comprise 11%, Parks and Rec 9%, public buildings and facilities at 8%, and our village and neighborhoods at 5%. The next slide I'm going to show you, this includes all funding sources. So the next slide I'm going to show you is those $270 million with the projects, but if we take out the funding sources that are not local funding sources, so we're talking about federal grants, we're talking about state grants, we're talking about any kind of funding where it doesn't come from either cash out of our general fund or bonds issued, and you'll see that changes the functional, the percentages of categories quite a bit. Transportation now is 24%, schools jumps to 34%, public safety at 15%, Parks and Rec at 11%, public buildings and facilities at 10%, and village and neighborhoods at 7%. What this does, what this really illustrates is how much of those transportation projects specifically are funded by non-local sources. And so as I explained in the Subcommittee meetings and in all of our meetings as we developed this CIP, really what we're looking at here for a CIP is we are looking at projects that have been on the books, we are looking at projects that we need to finalize some funding for, we're looking at some pretty significant school construction, a significant school construction project, and then as it comes to the area of transportation in these places where we are getting a lot of funding that is considered non-local funding, we are using the dollars that are available to leverage those grants. A lot of those grants come with some sort of a local match, and so where we need to put local funding in, we are putting local funding in so that we can really take advantage of these opportunities. Excuse me. What you will not see in this CIP plan is anything related to ARPA funding, which we, the city council has already appropriated the ARPA funding to a series of projects. That was done when we first received the ARPA funding. You will also not see any projects in this plan related to any of the federal-level bills that we don't know what we're getting yet. So as it relates to the infrastructure bill or any of these bills that are coming out of the recovery from the pandemic that the federal-level legislation has passed, those, for the most part, are competitive-type grants, and we have to apply for them on certain projects. And at this point in time, as we have not been awarded any of that funding, you're not going to see those projects in this plan, because we didn't put anything in there that we don't know yet. The next slide you're going to see is where the revenues are coming for, for that $270 million number that I spoke of earlier. We've got bonds are funding 54% of the projects, state, federal, and other at 29%, which is a very good chunk of revenue to cover a lot of these projects, and then general fund at 17%. If you've been on the commission, and most of you have been on the commission for several years, you'll notice that that percentage of general fund cash has increased quite significantly. We do have a policy that requires 3% of our general fund, our governmental funds budget to be put to the CIP as cash-funded capital, but what we've done in this plan is added a little bit more to that. So for the first five years, we have approximately $46.4 million in cash over the first five years to accomplish these projects. By policy, we're hovering in the neighborhood of about $6 million that is required annually. And then there's 11.3, included in that $46.4 million, 11.3 of that comes from our newly established capital reserve fund that the city council approved by policy a little over a year ago now. The city council set up a capital reserve fund where if we have surpluses in our general fund at the end of the year, it goes through a series of, we call it the waterfall policy. It first goes towards our unassigned fund balance policy to meet that, then it goes into either a budget stabilization fund or a capital reserve fund. And so we have been able to put money into that capital reserve fund, and we are putting 11.3 million of that into this plan in the first two years of this plan to help us achieve some of those very large projects that we need to. By no means does that spend down the capital reserve, nor do we want to spend down the capital reserve to zero, as it allows us a cushion. As we all know, inflation is high, and we are seeing increases on project costs that we may not have foreseen when the project, when these, when these projects were conceived four to five years ago. And so we're leaving money in that capital reserve fund as well in order to cover some of those unforeseen things that are going to, that we know that are coming at us. With that, I'd like to get into the specifics of some of the projects, and so I'll give you page numbers as we go along here, so that in the books that you have, you can get the detailed descriptions of each of these projects, because I will not be providing detailed descriptions of each project. We'll be here for way longer than any of us want to be. So on page 21, you'll see is where the section on Parks and Recreation starts. You'll see that we have Parks and Rec Capital Maintenance hovering around $600,000 to $800,000 a year. This is an annual funding project that we put money into to handle our maintenance on our existing parks, facilities, and the like. So anything that needs to get done from a maintenance standpoint, it goes through this, from a capital maintenance standpoint, goes through this line item. Lone Star Lakes, we have out in years four and five, four, five, and three, four, and five, excuse me, starting with $2.8 million. That is some funding to start the planning and start some of the construction for a visitor center, as well as some road construction out in Lone Star Lakes. Trail enhancements are for enhancements that we have on existing trails, and we've got $50,000 in year one and year four. The Seaboard Coastline Trail at $4.2 million. That funding is federal funding that we have received in order to do, I believe it's, let me flip to page 21 very quickly. This is Phase 3B of the trail that extends the trail one and a half miles from the recently completed Segment 2 at Nansman Parkway to tie into the Cedar Lake shores neighborhood at Pine Tree Way and to start some work on Phase 1. The next project, we've got some money funded out in years three, four, and five for the driver complex to start some projects out in that area. Sleepy Hole Park reservations are out in the out years, as well as East Suffolk Athletic Fields. Water access at the Nansman River, we have put into years two and three with, as everyone is aware, this project has been around for quite some time, to build a boat ramp with access to the Nansman River, and that is moving forward. I will take this opportunity to just pause for just a second and say that this plan was put together very carefully. As you're going to see in a sneak preview is when we get to the school funding, we are planning on building a new middle school to replace John F. Kennedy Middle School. That is a very significant project as it relates to costs, and with the various and assorted policies that we have and our funding limits, you'll And with the various and assorted policies that we have and our funding limits, you'll see that that project itself and the cost of that project takes up a lot of what I'll call bandwidth in the first two years of this plan. And so a lot of those projects that we would like to or may, the desire may be to move them a little further forward, it's very hard to do that because we are out of capacity in the first, really the first five years at this point in time. So we were very careful about where we put things and how we timed things so that we could fit the funding for that middle school in there, as everyone is aware that that is a needed project. Downtown Rec Center is out in year four with some funding to initially get some design started on that. The Great Dismal Swamp is a project that is in years three and four to build some recreation down in that area. Some improvements out at the Holly Lawn Cemetery, including some road improvements in the initial years and then some expansion of that cemetery as we move forward into the later years. Improvements at Lake Mead Park and JFK Field Lighting, that one is specifically timed. That may seem a little odd since we're building a new school at JFK. The project itself will cover the athletic fields. The city uses those athletic fields after dark. The schools don't really use the middle school ones very much after dark. And so as has been done in the past, the city provides the lighting for those fields because our Parks and Rec leagues are the ones that use those after dark. So we've timed that with the timing of the completion of the middle school to be able to put those lights in. Moving to Public Buildings and Facilities, which is on page 29 in your book, we have a couple of airport projects, a drainage rehabilitation project at the airport. The bonus of these airport projects is that 2% of these projects are local funding. The rest is a combination of state and federal funding. So while you see the $1.5 million in total, the portion that the city actually is responsible for is very small from a local dollar perspective. And so again, with the Airport Master Plan update in year three, $350,000, but again, only 2% of that is the city is responsible for from a funding standpoint. City Buildings, the Public Building Capital Maintenance, like the Parks Capital Maintenance, this is a line item that we fund every year in order to maintain the buildings and facilities that the city currently owns. And so you'll see that we have fairly steady funding in that for the first five years as that is where we pull money from in the event that things need to be repaired or replaced at our current city facilities. The Central Library, everyone is very familiar with this project. The $5.3 million in year one is the funding that is necessary to complete that project. There's a lot of existing funding on that project and this was the last year of funding in order to move that project into completion. The Godwin Courts Building, we have some improvements there for some elevator repair as well as just some updates and improvements throughout the building as that building is getting fairly aged. While we all find that hard to believe, it is, I think Gary would tell you, over 20 years old at this point in time. The Human Resources Building Renovation, the building across the street here, there's funding in year four as it relates to renovating that building to move the school administration offices out of the space that they are currently leasing and into that facility to provide them offices. Cherry Street Parking Lot Upgrades, that is some funding in order to, as it says, do some upgrades to the parking lot at Cherry Street, which apparently was built with some, to improve the flow in that parking lot as well as some safety issues that are being experienced out there. And then the Municipal Complex Ravine Stabilization, that million dollars is paired with the Human Resource Building Renovation Project above it. As part of that project and renovating the parking lot as well as the building will require the ravine that's across the street from us to have some stabilizing work done to it in order to improve that parking lot. Moving to Public Safety, which in your books is on page 35, this is where we give you a little bit of just color to look at, just for the fun of it. The colors kind of go together as it relates to timing of projects and so as you'll see, the one that you see there most is kind of that golden-yellow color and that times the station replacements with the apparatus replacements or the new apparatus that need to come with it. And so it's all timed very carefully. So what we have in Public Safety, we've got fire apparatus replacements. This is replacing fire trucks, ladder trucks, all the various types of big equipment that the firefighters like to drive around. And what this does is in the first two years, provides a replacement for a fire engine each year, in the first two years, and then in year three, four and five, there's a little bit more, like two or three pieces of equipment in those as our fire apparatus outgrows its useful life, then we replace that. And this is pretty standard, we've been doing it this way for a number of years. The next line then is the same story with ambulance replacements. We've got one in each of the first two years and then cost escalations in years three, four and five as we replace an ambulance a year as we move forward. The ambulance for the new station, again, that golden, kind of golden rod color, that goes along with the replacement of Station 4, which is out at Lake Kilby. And as we replace that station and increase the size of it a little bit to add a medic unit out, did I say that right, Chief? To add a medic unit at that facility. The Nansman-Willroy Fire Station, that is some initial design work in year five. The self-contained breathing apparatus, those are the tanks that the firefighters wear. We have that in here in year five as that times with when those need to be replaced. I believe we did that sometime in the last, I want to say, two years. And then by year five, they will need to replace another batch of them. Station 9 upgrades out in year four and then, as I mentioned, the station replacement for Lake Kilby, starting in year three with some construction money in year five. As far as police goes, in the first five years, in the first year, we've got some improvements out at the Police Training Center in Whaleyville. The building out there, they have a simulator out there. This is a training facility and we want to do some improvements to the site as well as the building in order to better utilize that facility for police training. And then the Backup 911 Center, starting in year five. Moving to Public Schools, which jumps a few pages to page 65 in your books, you'll see this is where we've got some very large dollar amounts as well as transportation. So initially, we've got the JFK Middle School replacement and that is to replace the school at, replace the middle school where JFK is. This is planned to be on the same site and they will build that in one place and then move the students. And the total cost of that, we have $7.5 million of previous funding on that and then $45.5 million spread out over years one, two and three to continue or to start the construction, excuse me, on that facility. Northern Shores Elementary Edition, this is one that has been around for a number of years and so we've got the funding spread out the way that it is in order to put that in there from an affordability standpoint. They also have major systems repairs and replacements. Again, this is something that we had been funding on an annual basis for a number of years through discussions with the superintendent. In order to accomplish Northern Shores, we've moved that out of that line item and put it to the Northern Shores Elementary Additions. And then in year five, we'll start the funding on that again. Looking at Village and Neighborhoods, which is page 71 in your books, these projects should all look very familiar as these are annual funding projects that we put into the CIP to continue the strategy which we have had for a number of years, specifically in the Village and Neighborhood improvements where we go into the Village and Neighborhoods and we do a variety of improvements. And after, like probably page 73 in your book, it will tell you what some of those specific projects and where the planned improvements are. The Open Space Improvements is funding that we put into the CIP in order to take advantage of opportunities that come up when it's possible for us to develop open space. And then the Downtown Initiative, Downtown Implementation Plan Initiatives is in order to accomplish the downtown plan that was adopted by City Council a number of years ago and there's funding in the first five years in order to accomplish those goals, including funding for the festival site as well as some signage and some wayfinding and that type of stuff. Transportation, transportation is a very large, long list. And so starting on page 45 in your book and we will go through these transportation projects. First and foremost, we have Holland Road. Everyone is familiar with this project. There's some funding in year two in order to complete the budget or complete the appropriations needed to complete the Holland Road project. The Godwin Boulevard's, the Godwin Boulevard improvements in years one and two, to do improvements out on Godwin Boulevard. Route 17 road widening and I believe, and I'll turn to page 45. This is to, excuse me, widen Route 17. This is not inclusive of the intersection project that is underway, but instead to take that widening a little bit further. Shoulders Hill Phases 2 and 3, moving south from the intersection project at Shoulders Hill and the funding to start those projects. Moving into the overall projects of intersection projects, you've got the Route 17 Crittendon Road Intersection, the diverging Diamond Interchange at Godwin, as well as the Suffolk Bypass, Willroy, Godwin and Pruden IMR Study, and those are all fundings in the first three years for those. And then some of the outer projects for that is the intersection at East Constance and Willroy as well as the Willroy Road and Progress Intersections. The next page includes some standalone projects. The Shoulders Hill Route 17 Intersection, as I mentioned earlier, this is the final funding on this project in order to get the appropriate, the right amount of appropriations to finish that. Channel dredging in both Bennett's Creek and the Nansman River. Bennett's Creek in the first year or in the second year and the Nansman River the third year. Rail crossing improvements, this is miscellaneous improvements at rail crossings where we have the opportunity to make those and then some miscellaneous roadway improvements. This is funding where we don't have the opportunity to use maintenance, B.D. maintenance money, but we have need for some rather smaller or miscellaneous, as the title implies, improvements throughout the city. Relocation of Zone C Headquarters, the Zone C for the Public Works Department is currently at Lone Star Lakes and is going to be relocated to Northgate Industrial Park. And so this is the funding in order to accomplish that. The first year funding is some stormwater improvements that need to be made as part of that project and then the construction funding in year three. The next two are, the next two, Freeman Mill over Spivey Swamp and Route 58 improvements, Long Street to Holland Bypass, those are funding from various federal sources. One is a bridge construction and one is some improvements on Route 58. The Downtown Railroad Warning System, Citywide Signal System Upgrade and the Downtown Signal System Upgrade, I'm starting to get a little tongue-tied here. As the name implies, are for upgrades to those systems and timing and that type of thing. Non-median brake intersection improvements are some various intersection improvements. And then out in year four, look at some funding to install some electric car charging stations as that is where the future is coming as it relates to vehicles. And then some funding for a sidewalk on Town Point Park, on Town Point. And our last page of transportation, I told you it was a long list. We've got the Route 460, some Route 460 improvements as well as the funding for the Pitch Kettle Road Realignment Project. Which one am I missing? Oh, and the Kings Highway Bridge. A little bit of funding to start some of the construction or the design for the Kings Highway Bridge. Nansman over Beeman's Mill is some federal funding that we received for some bridge replacements. And then a little bit of funding in year four for a multi-use path that goes down Shoulders Hill. And finally, Nansman Parkway, the Nansman Parkway and Willroy Road flyover, some additional funding out in year three to continue moving forward with that project. And you'll see there's a lot of projects listed there with zeros in their lines. That means that they are planned for in the CIP, but they are out in years six through 10 and so we're not going to focus on those, but they're listed there as projects that are coming. With the completion of the transportation projects, that completes everything that I talked about as it relates to the $270 million worth of projects in the general government. And so now we'll move into some of the projects that are in some of our other funds and I'll kind of hit on some of the funding sources of these as well. So we have a replacement of our fleet facilities in year, planned for in years three and four. This is to replace the aging fleet facility that is, that we currently use and to move our fleet operations out to our Carolina Road Site where a lot of our operational departments are moving to.
Page you're on now.
I'm sorry.
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's page 101. Please forgive me for not pointing that out. And that would be with a combination of general fund bonds as well as cash. Moving on to the next one with Transit, which is on page 97, there is funding in years two and three to build a Transit Operations Facility, again, out at our Carolina Road location. This is all federally, federal and state funding, there is no local funding on this. And then to do a bus pullout at College Drive in year three. Looking at Information Technology, which is on page 105, I realize that this is somewhat of a blank slide, but we wanted to talk about it for just a minute. There were a number of projects that were requested, including some tower site redundancy as well as some fiber infrastructure and the replacement of the video wall in our 911 Center. The IT Fund has some existing funding in place that was programmed for some projects a couple of years ago and through, just through, you know, as things evolved, those projects were not necessary and were never started. And so what we're going to do and propose to City Council is that we're going to take some of that initial funding or original funding that is kind of sitting there with projects that didn't get started and move them over to replacing the video wall in the 911 Center, some fiber infrastructure build-outs as well as the tower redundancy On page 87, we'll start with stormwater and we have a number of projects with stormwater. As the Commission may remember, this year, the current fiscal year that we're in, which is fiscal year 2023, was the first year that we did, we implemented a strategy to issue revenue bonds as it relates to the stormwater. We did that very thoughtfully and in consideration with our financial advisors and the stormwater rate was raised in order to be able to cover the projects that were needed. And so taking that into account, taking into account everything we initially started and said when we started this program, the programs in the Stormwater Fund have been carefully programmed where they are so that we can avoid, to the greatest extent possible, raising the stormwater fee for another, I believe when we initially did it, we said we wouldn't raise it for five years and we are sticking to that goal. And so that's why the projects are planned, the way that they're planned, so that we can use a combination of cash in the Stormwater Fund as well as bonds and carefully plan out that debt service in order to accomplish these projects. So what you have is citywide drainage improvements with funding programmed in the first five years, some improvements in the Old Town area of downtown that are needed with funding in the first five years, but specifically in the first two years. Oakland Drainage Improvements in the first three years and then Wilkins Drive starting in year four. Pewsville Drainage Improvements with funding in year one, this will complete some of the phases that have been started out there. Woodrow South Suffolk Drainage, starting in year two and going through year four. Jefferson Street Drainage. Jefferson Street drainage, starting in year five. First Avenue drainage, Sadler Heights. And then some driver drainage improvement issues in year one, as well as some downtown infrastructure improvements programmed out through the first five years. So, as I mentioned, these projects are funded by a combination of stormwater revenue bonds and stormwater cash. And we have a million dollars of cash programmed into this each year for the first five years. Last but not least, we have public utilities, which is on page seventy-nine in your books. And so, as you may be familiar with how we do the public utilities, we kind of have these master projects, and then individual projects will come out of those master projects. And so, if you turn to page seventy-nine, you'll see some charts there, starting on page eighty-two, that'll tell you what some of those specific projects are. So, we have water source development and water treatment plant expansion with funding in all of the five years. Some of the projects in year one include the membrane replacement project at the water treatment plant, as well as some improvements at Crump's Mill Pond Dam and Empoundment. And those are the year one projects. We've got water distribution and transmission system expansion with some funding in year two, as well as years four and five. And then we've got some water system upgrades with funding in all of the first five years. And those water system upgrades include water line replacements, the tank replacement at County Street, find and fix, and then our normal expansion type of things. Then with our sewer projects, we have our sewer extension projects, which are miscellaneous extensions programmed in years one, three, and five. And then their sanitary system, sewer system upgrades with funding in each of the five years, and that is our standard programs there. We have, as it relates to public utilities, the funding sources, we have about, in the first year, we got $24 million for the projects planned. About 20 million of that is cash funding in that first year. And so, we're doing the best that we can with these projects that need to be completed and trying to keep the debt to a minimum. We have not issued debt in the public utilities fund for new debt for the last three years, I want to say. And so, you know, we're going to issue a little over, just right around $3 million with the debt, or the plan is to issue about $3 million worth of debt for the projects in the first year. With that, what are the next steps? And so, I will be back here at your planning commission meeting on January seventeenth for the second presentation of the city, of the CIP. That is the much, much, much abbreviated one. And then we ask for your review and your adoption, well, your review between now and then, and your adoption of that at your January seventeenth meeting. We then tentatively will go to city council on February first to present this same presentation to city council, and then set the public hearing for February fifteenth. Those dates are subject to change depending on the schedule of city council, but that's where we're planning on it right now. For their public hearing and adoption, that is their first opportunity to adopt the CIP. And as I mentioned, once city council adopts the CIP, we then take year one and all those year one projects, and we put them into our proposed capital budget that we'll come back to city council with in the beginning of April. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that you have. I am not an expert on these projects by any means, so the department heads for the various departments that are responsible for these projects are all here as well to answer project-specific questions so that I don't say the wrong thing up here. And I appreciate your attention this afternoon and wish you all very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, but I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Commissioners, questions?
I have a question if nobody else does.
I have one too, but.
I do three.
Ms. Hanson, going back to the $30 million limit for the obligation, you know, for the bonds that we do every year, how long has that been in place and is there any plan to adjust it for inflation?
So, the $30 million limit has been in place for quite a long time. And I don't want to say there are plans to adjust it. We certainly look at that on an ongoing basis. There are a lot of factors that go into that. It's not quite as easy as just saying, hey, let's just start issuing more debt, because of course, when you issue more debt, you have more debt service, which impacts our tax rate because, because, I mean, because we have to come up with more money every year, right? And so, we look at that very carefully. We also have to make sure that we are well within our policies that we have established. And, you know, we are a AAA rated city because we do keep our debt issuances reasonable. And so, we factor all of that into when we look at whether or not to raise that limit. That is a topic of discussion, excuse me. Sorry, I thought I was going to sneeze. That is a topic of discussion, and it is something that we discuss on a regular basis with our financial advisors. For now, we are leaving it at the $30 million, which certainly, you know, at the will of various and assorted people could change. I prefer to leave it at 30 million.
Then my only other, well, one of my other questions is on the electric car stations, it says for five commercial stations. I mean, is that to be run by a outside-the-city agency or what is the definition of commercial there?
So, I will try and give an answer, and then the Director of Public Works, Robert Lewis, can come up here and correct me where I've said things wrong. The initial funding here is just to kind of get this on the books so that it's in our minds, and we don't really know at this point in time exactly what it will look like, but I'm going to let Robert take that one.
So, as Tealyn noted, this is certainly a new and upcoming funding opportunity through the federal government, and what we're trying to do is get out in front, have some money planned in the future, so that when opportunities arise that we can leverage money. And it may be that these end up being government-owned and operated, or it may be they're 100% privately-owned and operated, but this gives us the opportunity to go after these federal grant dollars, bring this infrastructure into our city, and start trying to encourage it. At this point, I wish I knew exactly what it was going to look like, because I'd be out there ahead of everybody else, and we'd get all the money. But again, it's anticipatory, trying to be prepared to leverage every bit of federal money we can.
And then finally, and this might be a question for Chief Baraki, the Lake Kilby Road firehouse replacement, it is out like four years or so. Is that, I mean, does that need to be done or considered sooner than that, given all the growth around that area?
Again, I will take an initial stab, and then Chief Baraki can certainly come up here. Two things that I would like to mention. One is there has been funding on the books for a number of years and we, for some refurbishments at Lake Kilby. And when you really take a look at that station, it really just needs to be expanded because it is fairly, you know, small on the scale of our stations. The other thing is that I remind you of the comments that I made earlier with how everything is very carefully fit into this plan because of that school that we're replacing. And as was mentioned to the city council members when we talked to them individually and to the CIP subcommittee, I think Mr. Creekburn, Mr. Eberwine got to hear me say on a number of occasions, if you move something forward, something else has to move back. So, that's why it's where it is, and I'll let Chief Baraki speak to the need.
Thank you. Thank you. I certainly concur with everything Tealyn has said, working with Mr. Moore and staff, and it's definitely finance and with Gary Jones from Capital, is we have money, about 1 million, Gary, in there that we're going to start using for design, we're going to start using for procurement of land, allowing us the opportunity for, over the next two to three years, I think it's funded in year three or four right now?
Three.
Three, to get a lot of the precursors that is necessary for that build, that if we had the money in the budget either this year or next year, we wouldn't be ready to spend it anyway. So, I absolutely concur with the finances going with it, certainly with the city manager. We're with Gary, and I think we're in a good position in three, maybe four years to start working at expansion of that station, so.
Thank you very much for that.
Yes, sir.
Before you get too far away, Chief.
While he's walking back up here, I would also just remind the commission that we are in the process of currently constructing a fire station up in the College Drive area of the city, which is not, you're not seeing that in this plan because it's already fully appropriated and in the steps.
This is really a follow-up to the other question on the Lake Kilby station. I believe that money was in last year's CIP or the year before was, like a million bucks for the, yeah. And so, what you're saying is basically you're going to be able to utilize that for some of the design functions, rather than spending it to renovate a building you're going, maybe even replace.
That's absolutely correct. And procurement of the property there, as you want.
Yeah, that makes a whole lot of sense. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I do have some other questions. Brady's Marina, I haven't, I don't see anything in the CIP for that. I know we're talking about boat landing, et cetera. Are there any plans or anything in the CIP for, or is that considered a part of a boat landing on the Nansman?
So, I'm going to have Kevin Hughes come up here if I can't address this one adequately. There was funding previously in the CIP to purchase land. And, can I say that?
Yeah, yeah. So.
Reason, I get people questioning and say, hey, what's going on with that? So, and I can't.
Yeah, there is a line item in here for Brady's Marina for infrastructure and expansion of access to the site. We, the city owns the site currently. We've been negotiating over the last year with the adjacent church to make sure that we've got a expanded road, to make sure a truck and a boat can pass each other, which they can't do today. And so, you do see funding in here in out years for design for preparation.
Very good.
So, the line item is the, is the water access to the Nansman River. But there was previous funding to buy the property, which we have done.
Right, that's awesome, by the way. One thing, one general question, and I'm sure I'm going to have some when you come back, but in looking at the summary page by fund, the capital improvements program and plan, which is on page fifteen, when you look at the numbers, and you've got to excuse old counted here, when you throw the numbers at me, I just kind of got to look at them. In last year's capital improvement plan for twenty-three, twenty-four, the total was about 73, 74 million dollars. And then I look at next year, if I look at the twenty-four, twenty-five, it's about $69 million. When you look at the actual number for this year, it's 122 million dollars versus what was projected last year. Is most of that deferring up of the federal support dollars for the projects? Is that the primary difference for such a big swing in numbers?
I would say yes. So, when you look at the projects themselves, again, that 30 million, 30 million, that stays very stable. The cash funding fluctuates a little bit, but based on policy, we are right around $6 million for cash funding. So, those stay fairly stable. So, when you see fluctuations from year to year, it's timing of when we've received award letters for federal and state grants. And the, and I know that in last year, what would be the current CIP that we're in, which is fiscal year 23, we had some very large federal and transportation projects that came in specifically, I think, for Holland Road. And so, that's going to be the majority of why you see that lower this year, but we still have a lot of federal funding in here for transportation projects.
And I guess, from a budgetary standpoint, when normally you're looking, of course, when you're projecting out five years, 10 years, I mean, you know, you're just guessing, you're pulling numbers out of the sky. Would it not be appropriate when you're projecting projects for outgoing years, as we are, that you, if it's only a line item, that there is a projection of, in other words, we're doing 122 million dollars worth of projects in the coming year versus what was projected for 74 million dollars. And the 68 million, that probably will change to 130 million dollars with inflation, et cetera. Would it not be appropriate in a budget to project possible funding for these projects? Or would that be something that's just generally not accepted in a budget proposal?
So, there's, if I understand your question correctly, and re-steer me if I'm going wrong here, from a projection standpoint, when it comes to federal and state grants, we really only like to project those things that we are really fairly certain we're going to get because of expectations and setting up expectations, you know, we apply for, we're very aggressive, I think, as a city when it comes to applying for these federal and state grants. And certainly, I know that specifically, you know, transportation does very, very well, but I also know that Parks and Rec is very aggressive when it comes to, to funding and to pursuing other funding sources. We'll take the Seaboard Coastline Trail funding, for example. There is a number of applications that we have in process, in various stages of the process for future development of that trail. We didn't include that specific, those specific funding sources in this plan because they're not far enough along for us to know whether we're going to get them or not. And so, from a projection standpoint, we really consult with all of our department heads who have projects in there, especially if they're projects in the outer years, and try and, and, you know, rely on them to give us as good and accurate projections as they can when these projects are going to be shifted by a couple of years. Certainly, when, you know, if we went back three, four years, looking five years in the future, no one would have been able to tell us that the inflation was going to happen like it's happened in the last year. You know, we didn't foresee the pandemic coming, we didn't see the coming out of it and this massive inflation. So, we're comfortable from a city, from our reserves, and I certainly am very aggressive, I guess, in my position in holding on to those reserves and reminding anybody who will listen to me that we need to have reserves because we don't know what's coming. We don't know when the next recession's going to come. I certainly wish I had a crystal ball, but I don't. So, we try to be very conservative as well, and that's the second part of my answer is that from a, from a budgeting and projection and planning standpoint, we are a very conservative city when it comes to finances. And so, we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. We don't want to project out things that we don't know for sure we're going to get. We certainly, as the car charging stations is a good example, we certainly like to put stuff like that in the CIP so that when funding opportunities come and they say, well, can you demonstrate that you have some local money in the game, we can say, yes, you can see we've been planning for this for a number of years. But we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves.
Makes total sense. Thank you, and thank the members of the committee of our group that were on your panel. Thank you, guys, for your hard work. I know it's a lot involved. Thank you.
I have a light question for you.
Okay.
Kimberly Bridge.
Yes.
Did you mention that anywhere in our plans?
I did, and I believe if you turn to transportation, which is on page forty-five, and the font is super, super small, I didn't, as a matter of fact, I did not mention Kimberly Bridge, but there is, it's in there. Robert says it's in there. I believe it's in the out years as it relates to the Kimberly Bridge. Is that correct, Robert?
I believe that's.
Six to 10 years?
Yes. Where, Charles is telling me 14.6 million, and it is so tiny, I can't see it. Oh, I see it. It's right after channel dredging. Let me go back.
Page forty-five, yeah.
Sorry about that. So, you'll see about the third line down on this slide, you've got Kimberly Bridge reconstruction, and that is in the plan, but it is at, it's 14.6 million dollars, but it's in years six through 10.
That also is one of those opportunities where we have out money in and opportunities are already starting to show themselves where we may be able to advance that sooner by leveraging that money that we have in the budget in the out year. So, we, it may come up and be sooner. I'd like to add, on top of what Tealyn was talking about a minute ago, one of the things with transportation funding that's been really interesting over the last two and a half, three years, we came into late 2019, early 2020, and the pandemic showed up. And prior to that, the. And prior to that, the economy was really clicking along, there was a lot of, lot of money out there floating around. And suddenly VDOT showed up early to mid 2020 and said, we're concerned, we, we don't think we have the funding available going forward, we're going to pull money back. So suddenly, we had projects that had been in the books and on the books for a number of years, working their way up, and they suddenly pulled the funding back, and we had to adjust for that. Which really interesting there, two years later, the sky did not fall quite like they thought, and actually things have continued on, and our economy is looking up a little bit from some of this federal grant money coming in. So now things that actually had got moved back are actually moving back forward, and in some cases, moving even earlier than where we anticipated it before. So it is an ebb and flow, oftentimes we deal with this federal money, and again, we just try to be prepared to flow when the opportunities are there.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Robert. I will, just to kind of tie that all up, as I mentioned early in the presentation, what's not included in this book is any of that federal infrastructure money, any of those very large federal level bills that have come out in recent months, because again, we're going through and we're going to as aggressively as we can pursue those funding opportunities, but it's such a big unknown that we haven't put anything in the books related to that because we, we just don't know.
One other question dealing with that, since you, since you brought it up. The, the infrastructure money, I mean, it's huge amounts of money that, that the federal government has allocated for that. Will most of that flow through the state transportation stuff? I mean, is that generally how it works?
I'm looking at Robert again because I'm not getting, I'm not intimately familiar with how those projects are rolling out.
I mean, there's billions of dollars supposedly allocated for the states, so.
There is. One of the interesting things about things like that is Congress passes a bill and says, we've got this broad plan and a lot of money. And then it takes staffers and other folks sometimes years to figure out exactly what that means and how to distribute it. And we're seeing that now. Some money has already started to flow, but there are some programs, and one of those like the electric vehicle charging stations, they're just now starting to flesh those out. So we're seeing money through the Department of Transportation, we're seeing money through the Department of Transit. I'm sure there's going to be money coming for other types of infrastructure, airports, public utilities, a lot of money yet to come. But again, a lot of that's in flux because they're still trying to figure out exactly how they're going to write those appropriation programs and then distribute that money.
Come on, man. I knew I was coming. I knew I was coming. Listen, first of all, let me thank you for your hard work. I've been sitting up here a couple of years, and every year you come with a very good presentation, and it's very clear and easy to understand. So I appreciate your hard work and everybody who's associated with it. And we, I just want to say something real quick. You know, when I first got up here, I was fighting for the villagers and the neighborhoods. That was, that was my pet peeve. And over the years, Suffolk has done an excellent job down on Lawrence Place, and it's, it's a great district. And I'm going to say this as a personal note, you know, you all fit Capital Street the last couple of years, and my grandmother was, had been on Capital Street for 70 years, and she was able to see the ditches cleaned and filled on that street, and it meant a lot to her. So I want to say thank you for the good work that you've done. I want to say another thing. When I looked over and glanced over the CIP, the thing that I enjoyed the most was the Amtrak. I thought it was great that that information, that study is put into the city, and I say this for this reason. As the members of the commissioner, I travel a lot, and one of my new modes of transportation is the Amtrak. And I jump on in Norfolk, and I go up to Baltimore, New York, Philly, Boston, you know, you know, wherever I want to go. And, you know, one of the things, when I first rode, you go right through downtown Suffolk. You look out the window, down through, I can almost wave at people I know, that's how close it gets. In light of the fact that we had a conversation about downtown entertainment in the city of Suffolk, and in light of the fact that there will be a casino in Norfolk and Portsmouth in the upcoming years, I think it's great that the city is offering an option, hopefully, and I hope it's not the only option, just as the Amtrak, I hope light rail as a mode of transportation will kind of hit the region. But in light of the fact that it seems like 10 o'clock, midnight is as far as we want to party here in Suffolk, I'm glad, I hope that, you know, something like Amtrak would give people the means to get on a Norfolk without driving, and they can go enjoy the casino. So that's what I enjoyed the most, and I want to appreciate y'all for putting that in there. I do have a question for Mr. Lewis, because I saw up there something on Town Point Road and Sidewalks. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, was, was that a new project that's just been put into the CIP?
Yes, sir. That is a request that's been coming from the community for several years, and we've managed to get it into start a process of adding sidewalk in that neighborhood. So that's in addition to the drainage work.
And the drainage work has come out of Stormwater, which is a different fund. But I would, since you up at another two questions. In, in light of the fact that we and the city council approved the Port 460 project, and also with the announcement of the floor renting tile company down there on Holland Road, when I looked at the comprehensive plan and some of the out years, there was a talk of something called the Western Connector. Is there any reason why we haven't put anything in the Western Connector in the CIP, especially with all the growth that's going on in that area?
Yes, sir. To this point, that's, it's, it's really a concept, it's a long-term growth concept, and we've not seen an opportunity yet to try to work that in and, and bring it to being a concept to actually starting to identify a corridor and try to fund it. So it's certainly still there, and I believe it will continue to be there, but we've not yet gotten to that point in time. It's like everything, everything has got to come to the right maturity before it kind of blossoms, and that just has not been one that's blossomed yet. Certainly a very viable need out there, I think, in the going years, but probably not one that's fully mature at this point.
And let me, and thank you for saying that, but you do see some kind of potential for the Carolina Connector. I know it was in last year's and this year that to move it on to, was it White Marsh Road or was it Hozier?
Yes, sir. So there are, so there are a number of projects in there that you'll see this kind of out in that year, six through 10. That's one of them, which again, we use as an opportunity oftentimes to leverage, to try to attract other money. Many times that other money comes from the state and federal levels, sometimes that other money comes from private development. So oftentimes before this board and ultimately before city council, you will see proffers in there to build certain infrastructure, make certain cash contributions. These structures, these plans need to be in the CIP in order for us to accept that money, especially if it's not a complete. If they can't come in and build an entire road, but they can give us part of the money, we had to have a plan in there in order to accept that money. So again, we can start moving it forward. The really interesting thing in today's world is money attracts money. If you don't have any, most people look at you and say, okay, we don't have any to give you. But if you've got some skin in the game, if you've got something to bring to the table, oftentimes on the federal and state level, it is much easier to attract dollars to come in and help you finish a project that's begun.
Thank you. Another quick question. Has the turn lane been established at the Pruden, Old Pruden Center?
We had a kickoff meeting last week with the contractor, and I believe sometime after the, well, actually, I take that back. We were hoping to get him started after the first year, and unlike so many other things in our world, supply chain issues, he has run into an issue with getting the large steel pipe necessary for part of that project, and has asked that we delay him starting work until about April. Again, we don't want to go tear everything up and not have the materials to prosecute that job to completion and close the road back up. So again, I think we're on about a four-month delay while he orders the material and hopefully tries to get it shipped in here so he can begin. But yes, sir, we are moving forward.
Thank you. I, you know, it's one of the ones I saw last year, I was just curious about this year. And I have a question for Ms. Hanson. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I don't, I don't have anymore. I won't even make up anymore. Does the library open this year or next year?
I'm actually going to defer to Gary Jones, the Director of Capital Programs, to, to give you a little more detail on the schedule, the construction schedule for the library.
Good evening. The library, as you know, the library has a long, long history with me. Library's been on the books ever since I've been here for 23 years, but we're in the very final stages. As a matter of fact, I can say that the design is pretty much finished. The project, as Kevin can tell you, is in site, final site plan review. And as soon as we come out of that, over the next couple of months, we're ready to go to bids. So first part of the year, we'll be going out to bid. It'll take, in normal times, it'll take about 16 months, and these times, it'll probably take about two years to finish this project, based on the, the nature of what's going on. So I would say early 20, late 24, early 25, we'll open the library.
Thank you. Also, since I had the mic, is there any update on the Christmas lights on East Washington Street?
Who's working on Christmas lights?
Kevin?
Fortunately, I think I gave you an update this time last year as well, but the update is we have ordered them, we're receiving, I think the lights will come in in January, and then we'll move to coordinate with Dominion for installation. There was a lot of back and forth with Dominion as far as ownership and ordering and things of that nature. So they're, they're, they're purchased, they're on their way, and we'll start installing probably springtime.
Thank you. Thank you. And, no, that's, that's it, Mr. Jones. I, I, I have one question. Is there anyone here from the school board or the school system?
No, but, but Mr. Jones can't answer questions as it relates to the school.
No, 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 I wouldn't do you like that. I wouldn't do you like that. I, I just, I just want to say this. The school system has a function, they handle the children and the growth and where the kids go, and that's their link. Planning and city council and the staff deal with the actual rezoning of land and the building and the growth zone of the city. And I just hope, and I understand that there's a threshold of 50 years of life for buildings, and I understand all of that, I just hope whatever we do, that whatever we build, because if, you know, if we look at this, we're talking about, about, when you talk about everything, you're talking about almost a half a billion dollars. Am I close to the number, Ms., Ms. Hanson?
You're, you're talking about 50, I think at this point in time, it's close to 55 million dollars.
Yeah, but you're talking about, I'm talking about the whole 10 years that you showed.
The whole 10 years?
On the whole thing. So we're talking about.
The whole 10 years is over a billion dollars.
Over a billion dollars. So we're talking about.
1.4 billion.
And I'm, I'm talking about just for schools.
Just for schools, I believe it was.
477?
I think in the, Charles is going to look it up for you.
Well, in the words of my little niece, it's called a lot. Well, what I will say is this, you know, I just hope that whatever we decide to do with the schools and how we plan to develop them, I hope we are running parallel with the growth zones of the city. And to make those kind of investments, we need to make sure that it meets the demand of how the city is growing. Because, you know, one of the hottest issues that we had to deal with this year was profits, and it's no need to spend 50 and 70 million dollars for a school, and a year or two or three years later, if you want to develop in that community, developers have to pay these high profits. We shouldn't do it, and we should be very wise in how we do it, and this has to be a joint conversation. And Ms. Hanson, with that, I have taken a lot of time on a long day, and I appreciate you listening, and all those who saw, answer my questions.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the status report for city council meeting. Mr. Wine?
Yes, sir. We had four items go before city council at their meeting of November 16th. The first being the rezoning request for the mini warehouse storage use to rezone property from OI to B2 there on Godwin Boulevard. That was approved with the proffers as presented. Conditional use permit request, CUP 202113, that was the Shady Pine Borrow Pit. They have asked for another 90-day deferral, so it will go before the planning, I'm sorry, city council, I believe it's, I believe in February. And then conditional use permit, CUP 2022019, that's the companion item for the rezoning that I talked about at the onset here. That was tabled, deferred for 30 days, and that will go before city council tomorrow night. Lastly, there was a CUP to establish a daycare facility at 1013 Raven Hill Road. That was approved with conditions. That concludes the update from city council.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. We had no preliminary plat, commissioners comments, and I'm going to look this way first.
Yeah, I'm going to make a very quick one. 10 years ago, I started working in, with NAACP and city activism, and this is at the old city, city hall. And one night, I went there, we was talking about redistricting 10 years ago, and there was a gentleman that I went to sit beside, and he said, young man, I think you might have a future in the city, so I suggest you go sit in the back, don't sit near me because I'm about to embarrass our, everybody. And so I went and moved, sat, sat in the back. And, you know, when we was working on redistricting about 10 years ago, he invited us to a house, to his house, and he would go over numbers with us, and he'd go over strategy, he'd go everything. Suffolk lost a giant in the person of Mr. Paul C. Gillis. You know, what, yeah, 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 Paul, yeah. I was, he was funeral last yesterday, and, you know, I, I said his funeral to the councilman, we sat beside each other, and it was, it was a line that President Johnson said at Harry Truman's funeral. He said, we do not know who lays in this box. And for anybody who's ever thought about being a fighter or activist, or whatever you want to call yourself, Paul Gillis is one of the best. And, and, you know, you, you know, he had a lot that you could disagree on, you know, but all people who stand up for justice and righteousness are always people who could be deemed as you have a lot to disagree on. But one thing about Paul Gillis, I agree with him a whole lot more than I disagree with. And I thank you, Mr. James, for this time.
Are you finished?
I'm done.
You didn't embarrass me that time, by the way. Other times, yeah. I'd just like to say that Commissioner Rector, it's been, I guess we came on first term seven and a half years ago, and I've enjoyed getting to know you, getting to serve with you, and I wish you whole lots of luck moving up to the next level where your decisions actually mean something. You know, so we'll be sending you all kinds of junk that, that you've got to straighten out at the next level. So it, it's been a, a real privilege to get to know you and work with you. Other than that, I'd like to say, everybody here, have happy holidays, stay safe, and be careful out there.
Mr. James, real quick, for Mr. Rector's speech, every year, this is another tradition here, Commissioner Hicks always gives us Christmas cookies. And, and they are so good, and we all look forward to them. It's one of the things you look forward to around Christmas time. So I want to personally thank you, and also, you know, I'm part of the commissioner ordinance. We have a lot of fun, you know, there, and, yeah, it's, it's going to be different next month without our chairman, so I just want to wish you well, too. Thank you. I'm done, now I'm done. This mic is off.
Do you, do you promise?
I promise. Okay. Start down on the end.
And here in the peanut gallery, well, yeah, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and John, we're going to miss you being here, but, and look forward to seeing who sits in that chair. So, which is going to be interesting. But I would like to get back a little bit to business having to do with the CIP. We served on the committee, and one of the things, Tealyn mentioned this, that, you know, and this also talks about the money that the schools, you know, the multi-million dollars for these schools, we have to, you know, we have to fit all this into a 30 million dollar debt limit each year. And when you're talking about this money in the out years that they've got in this plan? got in this plan, I don't know how we're going to do it, you know? And one of the things about this plan is, I've noticed in the amount of time that I've been here, it slides. It slides back, you know, every year, some of these things like the, the bridge between Driver and, and Chukata. That, you know, it's not there, but it used to be there, and thankfully, it's, it's in the plan, but it's going to be a number of years before that, that actually takes place because of the money that it's going to take to, to build these things. But anyway, I just think that we need to be aware of this limitation that we've got, and I don't know why we can't change that, you know, increase it because of inflation and everything else, but we'll have to see what happens from that standpoint. You may have to deal with that when you get up there. But thank you very much.
I'd like to piggyback with everyone, with John. Congratulations, and we look forward to watching you up in the big seat. But also, I'd like to make an opportunity to, anyone that has been out to Sleepy Hole to see the Christmas lights out there, it seems to span that, it's just, it really is a nice, nice deal. So with that, I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays, and like I said, be safe.
No, I'm not going to talk about John first. First, I'm going to stress the fact that I heard, what's, what's your name? Tealyn say that John F. Kennedy Middle School is going to be built on its own location, on its own property, that it's already not going to be relocated, and I want that, I want the citizens to hear that, because I know that my phone continues to ring, and I continue to get texts, people still want to know where they're going to build a school, and I heard her say it, they're going to build it on that property. So thank you for, thank you in your absence, city planners, for making that happen. I also want to say to John, been a good ride.
Thanks, man.
And I told you, you were supposed to make all the, all the, the comments today, and you made no comments. All day long, all day long, you had nothing to say for the record. What's up with that, man? And I'm going to be paying great attention to you because now you've got to be a politician. So that's going to be funny. And with that, Merry Christmas to all of you.
First off, I want to thank everybody for their very generous comments towards, some people call it a promotion. I think the jury, for me at least, is still out on that. I had a very long speech planned, but thanks to Mr. Edwards, we're kind of pinched on time. So I'll be, be very brief. I've served a total of sixteen years on this commission. I started back when Thomas Woodward was a councilman, and he appointed me, and I had no idea what I was getting myself into, literally no idea. I had just asked him a couple of questions about the property down at the end of Lakeside because I would walk my dog around there, and somehow or another, he got the idea that I was interested in land use ideas. But I called my good friend, Jack Nerny, and I don't know whether any of y'all know Jack or not, but he was an insurance agent around here, and he was actually the first person that I called when I was going to move to Suffolk, because I wanted to have a local insurance agent. For some reason, my dad thought that was important. And I didn't know anybody out here in Suffolk, but he was a brother rat to a good friend of mine's father. So I called up Jack, and the first thing out of his mouth was, what can I do for you, boy? And so I knew I was moving in to the right place and talking to the right person. But he told me, he said, I recommend you get on the commission, he said, because you're going to learn a lot, you're going to learn a lot about how the city functions, you're going to learn a lot about what goes on, and what's going to be coming down the pike. And so Jack, I want to thank you very much for encouraging me to get into this in the first place. And a lot has changed in the time that I've been on this commission. My very first meeting, we were still in the old city council chamber, and compared to this room, it would be like holding a meeting in a phone booth, because unlike now, where there's just one, basically one representative per borough plus a mayoral representative, we had two people per borough, so there were a total of fourteen people crammed into that phone booth. But while a lot has changed, there's very much some things that have stayed the same. And the primary constant is that we've always been blessed to have a very dedicated group of commissioners sit on this body. I've been very proud to be a part of it, I'm very proud to have served, and I'm very proud for the work that we have done. The second thing is, is that we're very blessed, as we all know, to have an exceptional city staff that puts these packets together for us, that does the research, that answers some of our very silly questions, and always does it respectfully. So I want to thank the staff, and I look forward, on the council level, to continuing to work with everyone on the staff. And with that, I'd also like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and I would be very remiss, and he's not in the room, but I wanted to personally thank Officer Jackson for always having our back. Every time I see him, I feel nothing but secure, and with everything that is going on, you know, in this world, to look out there and see him and know he has our best interest and our safety at heart, like I say, has always made me feel very good, and so I want to thank him. And also, I missed the cookies last year because of COVID, so I'm very excited to be back this year and get my cookies, and I look very, very much forward to eating them. And with that, I will say, good night.
Johnny, Johnny and I got your cookies last year, by the way.
I'm glad somebody did.
I'd like to echo all the comments around the room, but John, remind me when there were fifteen members in that phone booth for a brief period. I don't know, John, if you were there when Fred Bowen was there?
I was.
Yeah, so it was fifteen of us in that, in that phone booth we talked about, and it's been, for me, it's about twenty-four years. So I want to thank Commissioner Everwine and Crete Moore for being a part of the CIP, okay? And you're coming back with some advice already, so you were paying attention. And with that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and thanks for the support. I try to hurry it along sometime, and I get, I get going ahead of myself, but my attorney here, he pulls me back, okay? Thanks for your input.
Mr. Chairman, I should have written this down and put it in my comments, but, Mr. Edwards, one of the things I'm going to genuinely miss is your laugh. It's a very infectious, heartfelt laugh, and it almost makes me want to think of something to make you laugh during the meetings, but you, and I've enjoyed getting to know you very much.
Next year, you'll see me in our agenda, I'll make you laugh.
We'll start it drawing, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.